Good morning and welcome to today's New York Council hearing for the Committee on Education, jointly with Oversight and Investigations. If you wish to submit testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Thank you for your cooperation, chairs. We are ready to begin.
Good morning. I'm Gail Brewer, City Council member and Chair of the Oversight and Investigations Committee, and I'm very honored to be joined by Education Chair Rita Joseph. Before we proceed, I'd like to recognize some of my colleagues. I know Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Menon is on Zoom, Councilmember Schulman, and Councilmember Jaeger. I think that's everybody. Yep. Today, our committees will be examining New York City's school bus system. 150,000 students rely on school buses to get to and from school every day. Many of them are students with disabilities. And in my district, I have several D-75 students. They rely on these buses. For a system that exists to provide such an essential service to such a vulnerable population, you might think that it would be held to the very highest standards. But I have to say, for decades, and actually, one of the reasons I reran for the City Council is to address this issue. Our school bus system has been plagued with problems, many delays. 350 school buses are delayed every day. Every time a bus is delayed, it impacts the educational well-being of the students, who should be able to count on reliable service, as well as their families and caregivers, who too often have to scramble to compensate for a late bus or one that never shows up at all. I'd like to point out that in the support of today's hearings, council staff, and I want to thank them profusely, performed a comprehensive analysis of the latest school bus delay data, which is available on the council's website. Notably, there were more school bus delays last month than in any month since at least 2017 and 2018 school year. There's no doubt that this is still very much a widespread problem affecting too many students every day. You could argue that October is the beginning of the year. It might get better. To me, no excuse, buses should be there on time. Delays are only part of the story, as you can imagine. Too many students wait too long to even have a bus route assigned to them. We heard that it had been taking Department of Education a month and a half to process exception requests for busing, which are the only way for students in foster care, as well as students in temporary housing, other than students living in DHS shelters to get busing. And this processing time does not even account for the time it takes to then identify a bus route and start bus service once the request is finally approved. When the student enters foster care or enters temporary housing, the need to set up transportation is urgent, so that they don't have to switch schools, making these processing delays all the more worrisome. And I have to say thank you to DOE, because it always credit where credit is due, and also to DHS, because recently, we were working with many of the asylum-seeking families who switched hotels, but thank goodness, DOE said, stay in the same school. But then you have the busing-metrocard issue. Metrocards have been given to the families, but of course, what they prefer is busing. But thank you for the metrocards, and they were given on a timely basis. Of course, I did make a lot of phone calls, but they were given. There is the most basic question every parent and caregiver deserves to always know the answer to, "Where is my child?" There have been too many stories over the years of parents frantically trying to find out where their child's bus is. It's very nerve-wracking to have that experience. Despite recent progress on a limited pilot, the Department of Education is still behind schedule, rolling out an app that will follow all families to track their child's bus in real time, and we look forward to hearing about that. As you know, I like yellow cabs, but once in a while, I take one of those Ubers, and boy, do they track. We should be able to do that for the buses. These are just some of the larger issues we will be looking at today. No matter what aspect of this issue we are discussing, the focus must remain on the students. So many of them already have enough challenges that they have to overcome. Worrying about whether the school bus is going to show up on time should not be one of them. And now I invite my wonderful colleague, Chair Joseph, to deliver her opening statement.
Thank you, Chair Brewer, and thank you for inviting the Committee on Education to join you for this very important hearing topic. I'm Rita Joseph, the Chair of the Education Committee. Thank you, everyone who's planning to testify today. I'm very much looking forward to hearing your testimony. And Chair Brewer covered a lot in her opening remarks, so I will be brief. As Education Chair, I receive a lot of complaints, and not only from my own constituents. Unfortunately, among the chief complaints my office receives is school transportation. This includes significant school bus delays and buses that don't even show up, nonsensical routes, and even absence of routes entirely. How can parents and caregivers trust that their children are safe and receiving the education they deserve? In September, for example, my office was flooded with emails from parents in my district trying to establish bus routes for their children after their schools relocated to a new district. The parents contacted DOE OPT for two months prior with their concerns, yet their requests remained unfulfilled, and eventually, OPT stopped responding to their calls altogether. As a result, these students were without bus services on the first day of school. In October, a month into the school year, my office continued to receive complaints from these parents. Some students were still without bus routes, while others were being bused on newly-created and nonsensical bus routes that took students on an hour-plus journey to school that was only two miles away. Now it's November, two months into the school year, yet the complaints continue. Just last week's parents contacted my office about five new stops that were added to their child's bus route. This resulted in students arriving at stops 20 minutes earlier, only having to wait for that bus 20 minutes late. These students did not make it to school on time. As a forever educator, I know just how detrimental school transportation issues can be to the academic success of our students. I also know how much of a burden they pose on families and caregivers, who must figure out how to get their child to school on time among their other responsibilities. This can have a real and serious consequences on employment and other time-sensitive obligations. We are talking about students, largely low-income students of color, students in temporary housing, students with disabilities, who should be receiving legally mandated busing. There's only one word to describe this: unacceptable. In 2018, the Education Committee held a hearing on OPT's failure to provide students with reliable school busing services. The only thing that seems to have changed since that is that the problem has gotten worse. In fact, October 2022 saw the highest number of delays in any single month in the last five years, surpassing 14,000. Delayed times seem to be worsening as well. In October 2022, school buses were delayed on an average of 41 minutes. This is a 58% increase from October 2017, where the average delay was 26 minutes. And as one would expect, complaints remain stubbornly high as well, with OPT Hotline receiving 18,000 complaints at the beginning of the school year. At today's hearing, I'm hoping to get better understanding of why transportation delays continue to be an issue. I'm also interested in learning how DOE is working to resolve these issues, and would appreciate a timeline on resolution. Each minute a student loses from the classroom due to transportation delays accounts for learning loss, and this loss is something we simply cannot afford, especially now as we recover from the pandemic. I'd like to thank the committee chair staff for preparing this hearing, Committee Staff Nadia Jean-François, Senior Policy Analysis Jan Atwell, Senior Policy Analysis Chloe Rivera, Senior Financial Analysis Nia Hyatt, and Financial Analysis Monica Salavi, as well as my own staff, Chief of Staff Stan Weinberger, Education and Community Liaison Giovanni Picquart, and my colleagues. I'd like to recognize Councilmember De La Rosa, Councilmember Viles, and Councilmember Sanchez on Zoom. Now, without any further, I'd like to turn it over to the First Witness Panel and Council Committee Nadia Jean-François to administer the oath. Thank you.
First, I think, thank you, Chair Joseph. I think before we do that, first of all, Councilmember Ressler is also here. And just before we do today's testimony, we're going to play two short videos that the council staff, particularly William Alice Reed, have produced to highlight the impact that these delays have on students and their education. Both videos feature parents being interviewed at their homes while helping their children get ready for school. Thank you.
My name is Eli Goldberg. I am the father of Asher Goldberg, and I live in the Bronx in Riverdale. It's 6:40, 6:45 in the morning. You know, school doesn't start until 8:30, and school is 15 minutes away. You know, his IEP states that he needs to be on the bus for less than an hour, because he can't drink independently, he can't eat independently, if he's cold, he can't put a jacket on it, if he's hot, he can't take his jacket off, and quite frankly, if he needs to go to the bathroom, he can't say it. That's why he has to be on a shorter route, for the most part. So, everything about is wrong. It's almost quite frankly cruel to him to make him go through this. It's, I mean, imagine being on a bus for an hour and a half just waiting. If they get to school at 7:50, there's nobody who can pick him up or put him in class. So, they're not even ready, because the teachers have to get ready for school. You know, to the teacher, you know, so everybody's life is thrown to flux, and his school day is very significantly disturbed because of this. I mean, he should be getting on the bus an hour later. He should still be in bed resting up like any teenager needs to. He missed school on Wednesday. He missed school twice last week. So, he's consistently missing school, because he's exhausted in the morning by this time. He hasn't gotten any sleep, and my wife, who's been up with him normally until 1:00 in the morning, is exhausted as well. I'm late for work half the time, because my wife is not physically able to take care of him and get him out of bed, because he's a teenager, and I'm the only one strong enough to actually help him mostly. I have to be at work at 7:00, but I'm late for work three days a week now. Ideally, I would like the city to have routed and did the routing properly to fit what is demanded in his IEP, which is that he has less than an hour of a travel, which means that he'd be doing this instead of 6:40 in the morning, he'd be doing this at 7:30 in the morning, maximum. Quite frankly, it should be 7:45, 8:00, considering his school is 15 minutes away. You know?
Hi, my name is Corinne. I'm from Rockaway Beach. I have three children with my husband, and our youngest daughter has been experiencing transportation problems. For the last few years, our daughter has not been taken to school consistently by school bus transportation, and it's been a challenge to just function as a family, whether or not she gets to school on time, whether or not we get to work on time. She is having to be picked up early from school, because by the time my husband gets home from work, he would be turning around to go pick her up again. And when the buses aren't running, it's on us to get her to school. And if a driver or an operator is out sick, there's no one there to fill in for them, and the bus companies have no answer for that.
It's a very upsetting situation. I'll not work, and I'll get a phone call from my wife that the school bus hasn't arrived. Ironically enough, in 2001, I made a change of life, and I started driving for a living, and I drove school bus for two years. I've worked my way all the way up to a New York City bus operator, and I drive for the city. So, being a school bus driver in the past, I've worked for school bus companies, and this stuff wasn't allowed when I worked for them. I don't know how you just decide to not pick up a child. I would have been reprimanded, I would have been suspended. You know, there would have been some kind of protocol to follow, so that this bus operator was able to not just pick up my child, and it was a slap on the wrist, and we go about business as usual, and my child has to suffer the consequences. He's very upset.
People don't realize that if you compromise one child, that people have multiple children in a household, and then they're all displaced, they're all... Everybody is affected. It's a domino effect.
Thank you very much through the staff that put that together. And now I'd like to welcome the representatives of the administration who are here with us today. I asked the Committee Council to administer the affirmation, and then thank you for your statement. Counsel?
I will now administer the affirmation. Panelists, if you could please raise your right hand. I will read the affirmation once, and then call on each of you individually to respond. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Kevin Moran? Glenn Risbro?
I do.
Are there any... Is there anyone else? Shawna Gibson? Can you raise your hand? John Benson? Thank you. We will now hear from the administration.
Good morning, Chair Brewer, Chair Joseph, and all members of the Committee on Oversight and Investigations in Education here today. My name is Kevin Moran, and I'm the Chief School Operations Officer for the New York City Public Schools for the New York City Department of Education. I am happy to be joined by Glenn Risbro, Senior Executive Director for Student Transportation, and Shawna Gibson, Executive Director of the District 75 Citywide Office. I first want to thank you for holding a hearing on such an important topic and for your leadership and advocacy in this area. Providing safe, reliable transportations to students in this city is essential for enabling our students, especially some of our highest-need students, to receive equality education. In 2018, I came before the council during a transportation crisis for our students and committed to working with the council to revamp our transportation program. Those transformations, including modernization systems, improving customer service to families, working more effectively with our bus companies, and eliminating roadblocks that families confronted in getting their kids to school. Today, I will update you on what we've accomplished in our last four years and share this administration's commitment to upgrading transportation for our students. This is an issue that the chancellor and all of the DOE are focused on getting right, because we know how important it is for our school system and for our students and families. Under this administration, we view transportation as a priority for the entire DOE and not the work of just one office. We have come to appreciate that transportation isn't simply about the bus. A good experience for students depends heavily on what schools do, on what IEPs do, IEP teams do, on our enrollment, and on the availability of programs in every community. The biggest change to transportation today is that all of us at the DOE are working together. When I took this mission back in 2018, I discovered a system that was not designed to provide the best transportation services possible. Our transportation system existed in a silo under leaders who insisted on keeping it that way. Since then, we've made significant progress in modernizing our system and working to provide real-time accountability. Our guiding principles are these: re-centering services around schools, so that families do not have to navigate a bureaucracy to increase the services they need; investing in technology to increase the efficiency and visibility of busing services in real time; and aligning our processes to those already in use by schools and familiar to families. As you well know, we still have significant work ahead of us. However, I am proud that we have made tangible improvements since 2018. Transportation is now managed by a team of DOE employees dedicated solely to that mission, who understand its importance on a deep and human level, led by Glenn Risbro, who you will hear from shortly. We have implemented major process and technological programs that are increasing visibility and transparency, enabling the department to better support students, families, and schools through improved quality and responsiveness. I'd like to share two examples of what these changes have meant for us, our schools and our students and families. Technology to support family, student, and systems-level transparency. The DOE has invested in a five-year modernization of our outdated technology systems, many of them over 20 years old. This will allow us as a system, and allow our families, students, and educators to have real-time information into buses, and allow parents to view and select transportation options. For those that utilize busing, they will be able to track their bus in real time. For the DOE, that accurate data we then get about route performance, vehicle behavior, and ridership tracking will enable us to see and correct problems early, place students on route sooner, address vendor performance issues more effectively, and give families peace of mind. Our partnership with VIA is our cornerstone of this project, and we are grateful for their commitment and their expertise. Clearer, simpler lines of communications. Over the past four years, we've increased the avenues for families to receive information and support for their transportation concerns and questions, reducing their reliance on a single office. Schools, shelters, Committees on Special Education, and District Offices now have the access and ability to address most transportation questions, so that a parent can get support at their program. We've also published student-specific information in the New York City Schools Account, or most commonly referred to as NIXA, and have added general information on the DOE website. We also maintain a call center for urgent and emergency issues. To be clear, there have been and continue to be challenges, and the pandemic in particular has presented us with significant obstacles to those issues that we are grappling with. For example, school building closures due to COVID-19 caused the suspension of bus service, leading to layoffs of drivers and attendants. That, along with broader national economic and employment disruptions, comprised our vendors' ability to staff bus routes. Like many districts around the country, this leads to driver shortages we see today. We are grateful for the work of our drivers and attendants to continue to serve our families as together we face these challenges. As I said in 2018 and reiterate today, we still have progress to make, and we ask that you hold us accountable. We want to be transparent about both our successes and challenges while remaining committed to partnering with all of you to ensure that our children receive safe and reliable transportation every day. I always appreciate the council's candor and willingness to support our school transportation and welcome continued collaboration and feedback. I am pleased and grateful that Glenn Risbro has agreed to lead our transportation portfolio as its Senior Executive Director, and will now turn it over to him. Thank you again for this opportunity, and we will be happy to answer any questions you may have at the conclusion of Glenn's remarks.
Good morning, Chair Brewer, Chair Joseph, and all the members of the Committees on Oversight and Investigations in Education. Thank you, Kevin, for the introduction. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss safe and reliable transportation. My name is Glenn Risbro. I'm the Senior Executive Director for Student Transportation. Before I continue, I just want to say that every time I see videos like that, or when I get phone calls from families, it impacts me deeply. I appreciate it, Chair Brewer, and you have a commitment for me to resolve these issues as soon as I know about them. Thank you. We are committed to serving our families. My team and I are working hard to make improvements in transportation for our children, including those who use bus service, and with a focus on improvements for our highest-need students, as Kevin said. I'd like to start by giving a full picture of student transportation for our school system, because it is important to appreciate the scale of our transportation program as we consider how we can make improvements across the board. Every day, 52 contracted school bus vendors transport over 140,000 students to nearly 3,500 schools using 9,000 bus routes. This is both within and outside New York City. Additionally, in partnership with the MTA, we distribute over 830,000 student metro cards annually to students for transportation to and from school. As Kevin mentioned, we have made major improvements in our transportation system. We are better coordinating our communications, and we are slowly but surely upgrading our technology systems to allow us and families and educators to track our buses. But much work remains, and we appreciate your focus. While understanding the vast scale of transportation program, we must also stay grounded in focusing on the individual students and families we serve. This is personal to them and greatly impacts their lives day to day. Our charge is to provide a transportation system that works for each and every one of our students, that is safe, reliable, transparent, and accessible to all our families. One student who is not supported to get to school on time is one student too many. Kevin conveyed some of our busing and transportation system broad challenges and goals, so I would like to focus on more specific issues we face and what we're doing to address them. These structural challenges lead These structural challenges lead to the individual challenges the students and families face and feel and are critical to address. First, mitigating the driver shortages and their impact through training, recruitment, incentives, and rideshare options to our families. The top complaint we receive right now relates to bus delays and lateness, which is a symptom of the driver shortages that vendors and we as a system are facing. This year, we started with a deficit of 500 drivers system-wide. This means to get students to school, we had to double up routes with vendors asking drivers to drive two routes in succession. This leads to unpredictable bus times for families and students, and drivers are driving two routes instead of one. Because of how our systems work, it is also true that it is often our highest need students who are on these routes that end up without permanent drivers and thus are put in these situations. Today, we have made improvements but stand at an overall deficit of 313 drivers. While the driver shortage is nationwide, we have been working on a few different tracks to try to make improvements to address the shortage as it impacts our students and families. We have been working with our bus companies to help them with recruitment strategies and to expedite processing to get qualified drivers on the roads as quickly as possible. We have been pursuing ways to expand hiring pools and build career pipelines to create a sustainable workforce. As we work with vendors to address the shortage, we also know we have families facing challenges right now. We cannot wait for the shortage to be addressed. We need to be creative. We have launched a rideshare service allowing families impacted by route outages and double up routes to access prepaid rides to get to school as we work with the companies to find permanent drivers. This is available on a daily basis, morning and afternoon, for these families. This has been complicated to provide. Our systems are set up to support buses, not rideshare. While it's not a perfect solution, we believe it's critical in the short term. Two, addressing lack of transparency and real-time information for families, students, and educators through VIA. As a father and now as a grandfather, I understand how important it is to know where your kids are. Until now, we have not been able to tell families pickup and drop-off times, where their children are on their routes at a given time, or whether they arrive to school on time or whether they arrive home on time consistently. That is always frustrating and particularly frustrating, given, as we previously stated, the impact of the driver shortage. But we are finally changing that, thanks to your leadership counsel with VIA. Through our partnership with VIA, we will be receiving state-of-the-art routing platform as well as the ability for schools and families to view and monitor route assignments and vehicle locations in real time. We began working with VIA before the pandemic and are excited to finally roll out the VIA app to families and schools. After conducting a small pilot in 2021, we just launched the app in District 26, with other districts to follow. We have worked in close partnership with Superintendent Genta, the bus companies, the schools, and families themselves to ensure the rollout is successful and are using that feedback to make sure the product is working the best it can. This allows us to learn and make improvements before we move on to broader adoption. I would be remiss if I did not note that it was the council that passed the law in 2019 requiring that families can review real-time information for their buses to set us on the path that we are on today. It's taken longer than we would have liked. There has been complexities along the way, but we continue to work through these and are working with vendors, drivers, and communities, and we are grateful to the council's leadership and for lighting the spark. Improving communications and support to families through transportation coordinators, liaisons, and our call center. A complaint we used to hear a few years ago was that families had to wait a long time on hold just to get through to the call center. We heard of families waiting hours just to ask basic questions like, "Is my child eligible for bussing?" "How do I find out my child's bus route?" "What is the bus company's phone number?" Whatever the question, everyone was directed to a call center that was severely understaffed with temporary consultants. We're proud to say families no longer face those frustrating obstacles to learning answers to their transportation questions. Every school now has a transportation coordinator, every district has a transportation liaison whose schools can go to for help. We posted comprehensive guidance and information on DOE's website, provided families with route information using NIXA, and given schools direct access to the route information in the ridership system. This allows us to keep the call center lines clear for communication about emergencies, accidents, and complaints. We also shifted the workforce model of the call center. Thanks to the panel for education policies approval of the contracting with Nagaro to staff our call center, Nagaro has the ability to staff up if we start seeing an uptick in volume, as we usually do during the start of school. And all the staff are trained in how to handle families' calls about transportation. This allows us to be nimble and make real-time adjustments to better serve our families. Because of the many of the other changes we have put in place, we have been able to reduce call center volume from 27,593 total calls on the first day of school in 2018 to 3,550 calls on the first day of school in 2022. As those calls are being handled more effectively and efficiently, the wait time has been reduced from 16 minutes and 12 seconds on day one in 2018 to 10 minutes and 30 seconds on day one in 2022. Currently, the call abandonment rate has been reduced by 32 percentage points from day one of 2018 to day one of 2022. Currently, in November, 98% of our calls are being answered, and the wait time is consistently about 15 seconds. We continuously monitor the data to ensure that families are being helped in a timely An even more meaningful metric to assess our service is the type of calls and complaints we receive. Calls can range from basic inquiries that don't involve service issues to serious complaints about our service. Our service complaint data reveal a similar trend to the call volume data. Overall, service complaints during the months of September and October dropped from 26,649 in 2019 to 17,267 in 2022, which is a 35% reduction. Improving services for students in temporary housing and foster care. An area we are improving is the transportation we provide to students in temporary housing. A few years ago, we had routes entirely dedicated to provide transportation to our students in temporary housing. That approach caused inefficient routing and three-hour-long ride times for some of the most vulnerable children while segregating them from other students. The cost to taxpayers was approximately $80 million annually. We have now shifted our routing so that students are integrated with their peers and arrive at school in a more timely fashion. Along with that, we stand with the mayor in welcoming the new arrivals to our city and are committed to supporting students and their families with transportation to school. We've also been able to expand the service we provide to students in foster care. Before the pandemic, if we determined that we couldn't accommodate a student in foster care, we would issue them a MetroCard and revisit the issue in 30 days. We are now committed to finding a route for every eligible student in foster care, even those traveling across borough lines. While we don't have a perfect system by any means, we are striving to make sure that we are serving our kids to the greatest extent possible and continuing to make improvements in this area. Increasing family engagement and transparency. Finally, I just want to underscore our commitment to engaging our constituents in increasing transparency in what we do. We have recommitted to meeting with parent groups and learn about their challenges and using their feedback to improve our systems. One child who is not able to get to school because of transportation issues is one too So listening to our families is critical to diagnosing problems and addressing them to make transportation work better for our children. We also continue to speak regularly with community and citywide education councils to hear their feedback and concerns while sharing the improvements we are making with our systems. Family, schools, advocates, and all of you on the council are our partners. Family, schools, advocates, and all of you on the council are our partners. And we will continue to use your feedback to constantly improve transportation for our children. We welcome your feedback. We are continuously working to provide families with safe, reliable, quality transportation to and from school. Our families deserve that. I believe that. At the same time, we know much work remains to continue to improve services for our students. We know that the council has the best interests of our children in mind, and we look forward to continued partnership. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify today. We are happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, both of you. I know how committed you are. I would like to welcome Councilmember Krishnan Gutierrez-Stevens-Dinowitz-Lee-Williams-Haneef-Reo and Felice. And now, I'd also like to thank, Salamanca, I'd also like to thank the staff of Oversight and Investigations, Aaron Mendelson, Jonathan Mass, Zachary Mayer, Kevin Frick, and Katie Sinisi, who did a lot of work to put this hearing together, along with the amazing transportation staff. So I'd like to first turn it over to Councilmember Joseph, who's going to ask questions, and then we'll go from there.
Well, thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to just go back a little bit. I noticed that recently you guys rolled out a GPS system pilot in District 26. What I was wondering is, why didn't it happen, why didn't it start in 2019 when it was supposed to?
So the efforts for the, when we testified in 2018, the efforts then were in terms of building a scope and sequence and a product that would be fully responsive to local laws 32, 33, and 34, not simply GPS. So there was a fair amount of requirement gathering, and so we had put the bid out and awarded a contract. I would say that the initial stages were discovery around maintenance of information in over 30 different legacy systems that gathered information from different places. So the pilot certainly interrupted, the work that we were doing interrupted by the pandemic. We were working in earnest to get back on track. We found the product to be going to be very responsive to the local laws. We are building it, and it's going to, like I said earlier, it's rolling out in a district now, and we're going to see it roll out further as soon as the systems show that they are mature enough to advance. So I would say that when we started the work, we realized there were many different legacy systems that weren't related to the systems that we use now within the system. The effort here is to align it to systems and structures that schools and families are currently familiar with.
Okay. Why District 26 and not District 75, where we frequently hear a lot of complaints from parents, educators, with unreliable bus system?
So when we looked at all the districts, we looked at a variety of factors, one being company readiness. And so we looked at all the companies, we looked at all the systems and structures, and 26 appeared through the early initial stages to be the most mature and ready to take on the work. Part of agreeing to take on a pilot is to commit to and endeavor to solutioning in real time and giving staff and families and administrators access to this and providing feedback. So we felt that we would start small, not in a citywide effort, but to troubleshoot system structures, policies, and ultimately outputs.
And you rolled it out so far. What's the feedback from the rollout?
Yeah, so we actually have, Glenn and I are working on a presentation to come out to each council district to make sure that we show current lessons learned, current challenges, where the system is now currently, where the system will be over a predicted timeline, and to showcase that. It's really exciting. Our partners from VIA did a collaborative presentation with District 26. Glenn, I don't know if you want to share some more lessons learned there?
Yes, absolutely. But one thing I wanted to go back to as far as District 75, we are committing that after District 26 that we would be rolling it out in District 75. And I do recognize exactly what you mean about those families being the most at need for it. But as Kevin said, we wanted to make sure that the product was working, as it should, before we rolled it out to the most vulnerable families. Our initial feedback that we received has been pretty favorable. We finally have gotten the kind of cooperation that we needed from the bus companies as well, so therefore I'm confident that as we move forward, that the complexities that we went through at the beginning will no longer exist now that everyone's on board with the rollout of VIA.
Okay. Have we taken in account for maybe households who don't have internet to follow the GPS system? What's the resolution for that? What are you looking? Not everyone has internet. We saw that. I witnessed that firsthand during the pandemic.
That is true, Chair. We have the same access to VIA that families are having in NIXA County, schools will have as well. Even the representatives in temporary housing will have the same access to the same information as well. I do think this is something that we also need to continue to look at. I do recognize there's many families here that may not have the technology that we're putting in place, so we need to continue to be cognizant of that and don't rest just believing that everyone will contact the school or their representatives in STH. So that's what we're doing right now.
And in terms of maintenance for this program, who's responsible for it? How does it get fixed? Does it come with a warranty? Because we know things break down a lot in the DOE, and we want to make sure that this system does not, and how do we uphold it?
Yes. Maintenance and repair was contemplated in the contract, and we'll work in partnership with VIA and the bus companies if we find that there are any faulty devices or need for improvement. I would also say, in terms of the GPS, piggybacking on what Glenn had said, or the AVL, the Vehicle Location, school transportation liaisons will have that as well, and our call center folks will have access as well. And so if families still needed to rely on calling, that would be available to families as well.
So there's a part of the budget in the DOE that's dedicated to repairs and maintenance of this?
Within our contract, yes.
Okay, thank you. How many staffers do you have working at the OPT call center? Because my parents say when they call, no one answers.
Yeah, so we did change the model from the previous model that was a temp force at OPT in Vernon Boulevard. We heard that loud and clear. We've since changed that to a contract that is able to expand based on call volume. So I don't know, Glenn, if you want to, Glenn had mentioned in his testimony call wait times coming down. I would say the previous, when we were transitioning from different call center models, the previous critique was that calls were being answered and it was simply a ticketing-type system and therefore nothing's, so call times were lower and calls were handled quickly, but parents felt like we're only getting a complaint number. And I think in this model, you know, it's working differently, so if you want to.
Yeah, absolutely. During our peak volume, we had as many as 75 to 80 call center Nagaro agents handling our calls. So it is a robust staff. They are trained to handle calls from our families. So I believe that it is enough people that we have there. We do have seven that we have currently that's at OPT as well that help the escalation of some of these calls. But Nagaro, like Kevin said, has the ability to uptick or go down depending upon what the call volumes are at that particular time.
So for the record, how many people work there?
I'm sorry?
How many people you have on staff at OPT?
At OPT overall?
Yep.
Yeah, there's 159 employees at OPT currently. They're all regular employees, no temporaries.
And how many of them answer those calls that the parents, I met with 100, about 142 parents? I met with 100, about 142 parents. And they say when they call, no one answers, or if it is a ticketing system, no one gets back to them? There's no one that follows up and come up with a resolution?
Chair, I heard the same thing. My staff is going back to look at that. We, like Kevin said, it's, our call center is outsourced to Nagaro that we contracted at the beginning of 2020. So, what I'm, so, we do have about 75 people that answer calls all the time at Nagaro. But when I hear, and you're right, Chair, I have heard some of these same complaints that they're not able to get through. We meet with Nagaro frequently, and we address those issues. So, as we continue to work through those, we should make sure that we won't have those issues happening in the future. But I did hear those same complaints, and we are addressing them.
Thank you. From my experience, I know that schools usually have student transportation coordinators at schools. Are you providing professional development and training for these coordinators at the school?
Yes. As it relates to professional development, one of the things that we made sure in this iteration is working very closely with our school superintendents. And so, schools do have a transportation contact there at the building. And then, if there's a case in point where folks say, I don't know who that is, I visit schools regularly, Glenn visit, we were up in the Bronx together, had a couple of visits just two weeks ago. And you could see the transportation coordinator there with the clipboard ensuring, and first of all, I'd like to thank those school-based transportation coordinators and our transportation liaisons that provide support. Because in any emergency, you'll see them there with their, with their actual clipboards, checking rosters, checking boarding routes, making sure it's happening. So, if there's a place where we can get closer to the work, it's in this model now that we have transportation liaisons working closely with superintendents. And so, if there are places where you hear that's not the case, and you feel there could be more support and professional development, we're eager and earnest to partner there.
And they're not allowed to change bus routes, correct?
As individuals, they can make a recommendation to the transportation coordinator, and then that could be brought to OPT if there are resources. These are resource-dependent. I think one of the cases brought up earlier was in reference to the exception process. The exception process is essentially taking any non-eligible student and bringing them into the transportation system. So, they're not, those are largely systems-dependent and actually capacity-dependent. As Glenn mentioned, you know, having a shortage of 313 drivers, we don't have as much capacity to quickly go through the exception process, although we expedite them, our queues now are clear on exceptions. But where there's capacity issues, we like to make changes. So, we do listen to transportation coordinators. So, if there's cases where that's not getting through the liaison to Glenn or myself, we'd like to know about that as well. Because we could definitely look at available, we're bringing drivers on, so we'll look at available resources, see if those can be accommodated.
So, how long does it take for a child to get a route changed?
Go ahead.
Yeah, it takes, when a child issue enters our system, it generally takes between five and seven days for a student to be provided a bus route. Again, as Kevin mentioned, and I previously mentioned, the complexity of the driver shortage sometimes impacts that. But generally, it's five to seven days once we get the student-level data to put it, to issue a child a route and have the route begin service.
So, five to seven days. So, how many students? How many students need bus servicing and that's not receiving it?
So, in a system that services roughly 150,000 students throughout the course of the year on a daily basis, we see n-words of 300 to 500 students daily at some port in the continuum. As you enter the system, you are routed in that same timeframe. So, if you look at, school transportation doesn't have a deadline to get a school bus. It's a fluid process, open enrollment. As a student goes to an IEP hearing with the family and is added on the transportation, or if a student newly arrived to the system, or a student changes address, or if it's temporary housing or foster scenario. So, that, that number basically stays throughout the course of the year as we get new admissions and changes to program offerings.
But I'm hearing from parents that there are students today that still doesn't have a bus route.
I would, I would ask any member of the council that has a constituent, our constituent or shared constituent, send those escalations directly to Glenn and I for a lot of reasons. One, we likely haven't heard about it. And two, we need to reconnect with school and family to see where the breakdown is. We'd be happy to, these cases each that are brought up as escalations help us to troubleshoot in real time and solution. It could be something simple as misinformation. It could be simple, simple as the case hasn't gotten entered properly. So, we like to diagnose each and every one of those cases. They are truly learning moments, and for the council that receive those complaints, they are shared constituents. So, if you send them to Glenn and I, and we'll reconnect in terms of where it should be in the process and get back to you at a time of resolution.
I had a parent reach out to the office. She has a medically fragile child, cannot attend school because there's a shortage of nurses. What is, what is the plan to ensure that there are nurses on these buses for these students?
So, we certainly want to staff as soon as possible in those instances where an IEP recommends that a nurse is required. We work with our partners, as a Department of Health and our Office of Special Education, to make sure that we're recruiting and bringing staff on as these IEP program provisions are added. I would say that this year, this administration was very clear to make sure that we solution in real time and that we shouldn't have to wait to a hearing to get a complaint. So, if there is a specific complaint, we'd like to know about it. We do have options now with the ride-share model where it's a prepaid option for the family, where they can, in lieu of waiting at home, so to speak, for the nurse to be hired and ride on the bus. Glenn and I made sure that this program advanced and a great leadership in terms of giving that as an option for family to ride and be prepaid until the nurse is staffed.
How long does it take about for a nurse to give or take? What's the timeline for a nurse?
Those are largely just recruiting-dependent. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't give a timeline on specifically as how fast they hire a nurse. But I can take it back to the team and give you the pattern to which we're seeing this year. I'll do that.
Thank you. That would be very helpful. In the, in the foster care system, how many students do you currently bus?
1,200 students we bus this year in foster care.
So, is there a guarantee that every child in foster care that's qualified for a bus service will get one? Speak up, please.
Every student, excuse me, every student that is eligible for transportation will be issued a bus route. Again, all areas of transportation has been, have been affected by the shortage. But we are prioritizing our students that live in temporary housing and foster care to lessen the impact that those children feel. So.
Is that in collaboration with the foster care office that's established now in the Department of Education?
Yes, it is. And quite frankly, they, they helped us identify where there was a backlog and requests for foster care exceptions. And because they did that in partnership with us, we cleared that backlog, and those students are currently being routed.
And I'd like to add on to Glenn's comment around the previous work with students in temporary housing. Glenn did a great job. We were in a, in a real emergent crisis at that time, and we had emergency contracts that we pursued. And Glenn was able to, through routing and creative thinking, make sure that that happened. But what, what really happened behind the scenes was the work with our partners at DHS and a lot of the advocacy from the previous council about how do you make sure you're capturing information to actually identify a student that needs a service, ultimately then put it on a timeline for routing? We did that with DHS. We have a nightly download that gives us the information in real time. So, Glenn and I endeavor to work with our partners at ACS and the foster care community to talk about how do we quickly identify and quickly submit and quickly turn a route around? So, that is work for, absolutely for now, the here and now for us.
Thank you. Now, I'm gonna allow.
I'm going to do something unusual, which is to call on members. So, you have five minutes. So, who would like to begin? Call on members to? Councilmember Schulman, start there.
Thank you very much. First, I want to thank councilmembers, Chair Brewer and Chair Joseph for this very important hearing today. And I want to say that our kids only get one chance at a good education. And when they can't get to school, then they have, then they don't have an opportunity to do that, to get that good education. So, I have a, I have a few questions. One is, when somebody, when a parent has a complaint about bus or transportation, walk us through the process. How does that?
So, if a parent has a complaint, and Gail and to the data team on the council, I thank you for that number. So, for an example, you have 311 late buses to school on any given day this year. And so, a family will call to the call center, report that. Now, the companies often call in the call center. You know, if you listen on the radio in the morning, you listen to Shelley Sunstein in the morning, they say, here's the traffic report. Or you're watching whatever news program you're watching. They show you and illustrate where the traffic is on the FDR Drive, it's on the BQE, is it on the Belt Parkway? We see these traffic algorithms, and we see the delays, as does the company. Companies often call them in, and so, we're capturing the delay in real time. So, if a family was also calling it in, they're calling the call center, and we're basically trying to get an update on that. So, they're gonna get a case number, and ultimately, we'll get back to the parent with a resolution. One-time latenesses, I think, is a case where parents call, and maybe they don't hear back in real time. I heard that. That's a note that I've taken. We do a better job in communicating. With our VIA solution, we hope to eliminate that call altogether. Whereas, that route association is connected right to the parent where there's gonna be push notifications to track route in time. And in the further generations, not in year two, but maybe year three, kids will fob on each bus. Parent will not only know where the bus is, but when they got on and when they got off. That will help diagnose those kinds of problems if it's, my child isn't riding for an hour and a half. The, the system you see now is largely self-reported. And so, a point taken, we'll make sure that when a parent calls after they call it to identify it, that we get back to them with some type of resolution and update.
Okay, since you mentioned the traffic patterns, are school bus routes designed to take advantage of bus lanes?
Yeah. So, so, a couple of things on, on, you know, when I testified in 2018, Speaker Johnson at the time had talked about, how do you make sure you design routes that are responsive? And you know traffic is coming. And he had, he had said that. He said, you're gonna see that. The, the product that we source through VIA has traffic aversion technologies. We essentially bought their routing platform and their technology and their algorithm on how to move around traffic scenarios. Riding in a bus lane is absolutely something we encourage companies to do. The issue at hand is we're not running the MTA bus lines consistently, right? So, we're going to families, to residents, to doors, to curbs. So, we're getting in and out of the bus lane. We, we're going to do a, you know, a diagnostics on that once we see route attributed to a student to see if we can't gain those efficiencies. That is absolutely factored in our roadmap ahead. And, and there are some companies that, you know, we do have to issue reminders to, say, make sure you're taking advantage of this. But sometimes it's entering the bus lane and getting out of the bus lane because of stops that are added.
Okay. What's the criteria for ride share?
So, currently, we have the ride share for any outage where there's, for a long-term outage of there's not a para assigned to a student. So, if there, or if there is a route identified, and the company hasn't been assigned the work yet, or if there is a nurse, as Chair Joseph noted, if there's not a nurse identified currently. So, Glenn has probably more information if you want to add?
Sorry, I keep doing that. I want to go back to one thing that you mentioned before, and then I will continue with the ride share. One of the things that I've noticed, and although it being anecdotally, is that, and this is where I would like the council's help in. I see that a lot of these bus lanes are not being policed as much as they should. I see a lot of, of cars backed up. I see a lot of deliveries that happen, and buses go in and out of these bus lanes, and they're backed up. So, that's one thing I've noticed and I wanted to mention. As far as ride share is.
We're aware, and the MTA is aware, and those people should get massive tickets. But maybe you should put a camera on the front of the bus like the MTA does. Something to think about.
Take that back. Also, also, as far as ride share, we provide ride share to families and students who, who have been issued a bus route but is not active. And, and also to students who are waiting an inordinate amount of time to be assigned a bus route. So, we offer ride share to those families as well. And then, I'm sorry. Also, we also provide ride share for, for families that if they, if they assign a para and don't have a para, we provide ride share for those families as well.
So, is the ride share same as the Uber? I'm trying to figure out if a bus is late. So, let me give you the circumstance. So, in my district, I have a parent who contacted me, her child is autistic. And so, autistic children need routine, and the bus is always late. And so, that's a problem because then the child gets activated and, you know, and it's, and it's an issue. So, and I waited with her one day, and they didn't, they said they couldn't figure out where the bus was or anything else. So, I don't know if that's a specific issue to that particular parent or just widespread in terms of who can use an Uber, and the parent was late to work that day, you know, several days also.
So, I'd say, Chair Brewer, we'll make sure Glenn and I provide you our personal information so that the full council has access. But if there's a problematic route, ongoing route, a doubled-up route, yes, that provision. If we're not in a place where we're providing safe and reliable, we'll get to that case. So, Chair Brewer, if it's possible to, well, shit, make sure you have it.
All right. And also, if you could send the, if you could send the information about ride share and Uber, all of that to us because then we can share it with our constituents. Because I, if we don't know about it, we can't share that with the parents. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Chairs Brewer and Joseph, for the opportunity and for holding this hearing. Thank you to the administration for being here. I'll be really quick. I just wanted to share two scenarios with you all. I just wanted to say, like, I don't, I'm listening to you all testify, and I don't think, I think the larger issue is communication with bus drivers and the companies as opposed to shortages of drivers. So, I'll, I'll share two scenarios, and you let me know how you guys are gonna work this out. So, the first scenario, imagine five, six-year-old for the first time is taking the bus to school. And, you know, parent takes him to the bus stop, they get on the bus, and then they get abused physically by our upperclassmen on the bus. Parent goes to the school, makes a complaint. They tell the parent, go to the bus company to send in the complaint. Bus company then sends the parent back to the school. So, now you have this ping-pong effect. Your child was abused, black and blues all over their body, private areas and everywhere. So, that's the first scenario. More than one student goes through that. Second scenario, new migrant comes into the city, doesn't know English, doesn't have a bus company that comes to the shelter, so they have to navigate the MTA system to get to school. And for the first week, never makes it to class on time because there's no coordination between the shelter and the DOE. So, how are you all managing that process on communication, inter-agency coordination, and so on and so forth? So, I paint those two scenarios because if you're thinking about communities like mine and both chairs, you know that we hear these stories all the time. And then, we hear from you at hearings like these about some of the changes that you're making. But it's obviously ineffective if you have a bus company that has poor performance. What are you doing to address the poor performance of those bus companies? And what are we doing for a more inter-agency response to issues like I just shared with you? Thank you.
So, Councilmember Lewis, I thank, thank you for the two scenarios. And one, those are scenarios that we, we need to know about and investigate and work with the school. Any instances of bullying or student unrest on a school bus is addressed. The school bus is a nexus of the school community. We are addressing those actively. We have a student ridership team and ridership support team that does that very work. They work very closely with our school safety team and our borough safety directors that are out there in the field. And so, any instances of bullying needs to be addressed. We do have a discipline code, and we do have, you know, a range of interventions to where we could support. And if it's a supervision issue, we could also address that, too. Glenn has availability to put inspectors on school buses to observe. We have attendance, and if it's an issue of kind of de-escalation training, things of that nature, or keeping an eye out for bullying, these are things we will take seriously. And if there's a specific school, I would definitely follow up with you. And in terms of asylum-seeking families that are in places that need to be connected, we work closely with our students temporary housing liaisons within the DOE. If there's an instance where there's a breakdown, we could sharpen our pencils and get better at a process with the teams. But it's, it's in our collective interest to get them routed as soon as possible. We've seen some, some good success stories, but if there's a place where that didn't happen, we want to make sure that's happening in real time. And on vendor performance, we do think, you know, when you look at the drive, the breakdown system, the data Chair Brewer shared at the onset, it, it's largely self-reported, and so, sometimes it may not represent fully the representation at the school level. When we move to VIA and the solution, we will have route drive time attributed to school session time. And helps us to do a better job, too, enabling, managing our resources better based on what we see from that data. So, we'll see in real time who's late. I mean, we're pushing inwards, 97% on-time arrivals, and so, 300 is too much. I agree. It should be zero, and we endeavor to get to that place. But I think when we get real data, we'll be able to do better job with vendor management because it'll be clear to, and the companies will be accountable to that data in real time.
One thing I wanted to add about asylum seekers. Our student-level data does not identify which students are asylum seekers. However, we do have an escalation protocol. Melissa Ramos and Mark Traeger, who's here, handles those escalations. And we did have some recent successes where a student that fell outside of our normal eligibility guidelines for students temporary housing, we provided additional stops, and we worked with the schools to make sure that these families that are newly arriving in the city are handled and make sure that they are provided the support services that they need. they need.
Well, they get metro cards and hold on, they get metro cards, but then how soon after that do they get bus service, or does it depend? They get metro cards, and I thank you, but then what?
It would depend on, if it's escalated to us and they're outside the eligibility guidelines, it would depend how quickly we can get a route there. But we do venture to do that as soon as it escalates and gets to our office.
Councilmember, more questions?
No, I just wanted to share, based off what you just communicated to us, I still feel there's some disparities there. We should have that discussion, because there are still shelters that are not receiving bus services. And even if you hand a metro card to a kid that's an asylum seeker, that doesn't mean that they understand how to navigate the system. So I don't know if matrons are being designated to particular shelters so that those kids could get around, but this is a larger discussion for another day. So look forward to working with you all on that.
Yes, and definitely, that is mutual. We look forward to working with you and any council member. Glenn and I are available to come to the council office, partner up. Your constituents or our constituents, we want to learn that lived experience. And if there are breakdowns, we'd like to see them, feel them in real time along with you, so we can solution together.
Councilmember Wessler?
Well, firstly, I just want to thank Chairs Brewer and Joseph for your leadership and highlighting this critical issue. OBT, OPT is one of the areas where we've unfortunately seen too much dysfunction, and frankly, among the companies that are involved, too much corruption over many years. And Kevin, I really do appreciate your thoughtfulness and solution-oriented problem-solving and incredibly hard work. And I know you're trying to move things in the right direction. It's still an area where there is a just tremendous improvement needed. Rather than fully beat up on you, I'd like to highlight something that I think is working well, and try and see if that's a strand for how we can start improving things, and that's Nice Bus. Nice Bus is an example, in my opinion, of how school bussing should work. A nonprofit organization with the goal of improving and innovating in school transportation, not to make a profit by doing the bare minimum, frankly, not even that for too many of our school bus companies. A few examples of their exciting work, working with NYU Center for Urban Studies to use data to predict vehicle breakdown risk and develop proactive maintenance programs, reducing breakdowns and delays for students. They recently won an $8 million grant from NYSERTA to develop a Center for Excellence for electronic school bus, for electric school buses, excuse me, which will help overcome driver and mechanic knowledge gaps and ensure the infrastructure is in place for all New York City buses to be fully electric by 2035. Nice Bus operates 835 routes, less than 10% of the total bus routes, but we need them. We need innovative companies like Nice Bus operating all routes. And DOE needs to make sure Nice Bus and others aren't hamstrung by, frankly, the dysfunction that we too often see at OPT. So my question is a simple enough one. Is DOE seeking to replicate the results of Nice Bus? Is DOE thinking about nonprofit partners that can help with innovation, from electrification to GPS tracking and more, that would improve results and save money?
Yeah, so I was very fortunate to be one of the individuals putting together the Nice Bus structure and the not-for-profit structure. They do have a CEO, they do have a board, they do function in many ways like one of our 52 vendors. To your point, they are a not-for-profit. They are innovating in a space around electrification, and it's just very exciting for us. For us, it was designed to learn more about the industry. And so when we went before the panel for educational policy, and, you know, we posted in the City Bulletin, this is this idea, we were excited for the formation. So we're early in the process. They experienced their first September independent of their own this year. And then we started the first day there with the chancellor, and he's very interested in, we met with the president of the ATU and talked with Tomas Fred about the future for us. One is an innovator in the space with our partner, a city-affiliated not-for-profit. So there's great excitement there. We're looking to learn from that.
Any plan for expansion at this time?
Well, I think as it was built, it was first built to first understand the industry, and I think there was that in mind. Yes, I do.
I've visited the Nice Bus Depot in my district in Greenpoint. I was really impressed. And I've been, I think that the staff that are guiding this effort are smart, are creative, are innovative, and are bringing the right values to this work. This isn't about making money. This is about delivering for our young people, especially young people with IEPs. And to have a reliable partner who you can trust, who you can depend on, who cares about our kids, that's what we're all looking for in school bussing, right? So I really, really want to implore that you all think about, how do we expand Nice Bus as quickly as possible? Because we have so much that's not working. This is, to me, the hope in the school bussing landscape. I would be remiss if I didn't just call out a local issue that, you know, to give an example of the kind of stuff that-
Councilmember, can I ask you one question? Are those, we all want to know this, you got 52 companies, is Nice Bus more on time than the others?
So we have daily reporting metrics and in various categories.
We don't have, yeah, that's what we want to know. Are they better than the others?
By percentage, I'll get you the percentage, because they are, they are single-largest provider, as a single-
Are they better than the others?
I'll get it to you. Absolutely.
No, I appreciate it, Chair Brewer. I think you're right. We have to look at the data, and they need to demonstrate results. My understanding is they're primarily serving kids with IEPs, so they're serving a higher need population where their intervention is most important. And so I imagine there are additional challenges that come with that, with those responsibilities. But this is where we need to invest and expand and prioritize. Could I just take 30 more seconds? Thank you so much. I just want to share this as an example of the kind of incoming we get, and Kevin, I really appreciate, I know that when you tell us that you want to personally help solve these problems, you will. It's a big city, it's a big system, and Glenn, I am meeting you for the first time. I'm sure it's a similar approach if you, if you work with Kevin. But a disabled student in my district did not receive her legally mandated bussing for over three weeks this school year. OPT gave a sad series of excuses, that there was no kindergarten profile, the information did not transfer properly, OPT did not have capacity at the school, the address was incorrect, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And when a route was finally assigned, there was no para professional available. So this is the kind of stuff that we deal with, and it's really frustrating. And I want, and we'll follow up more proactively with leadership, because, you know, to make sure these issues get addressed. But it's why I really want to highlight Nice Bus as an alternative to what hasn't been working for too long. Last thing, not exactly bussing-related, but school transportation-related, because I see my friend and former council member Mark Traeger right there. We have a lot of kids from our district that are going to the Harbor School every day, and they don't have the same subsidies that everyone else gets. And they should, to get on NYC Ferry so that they can get to and from school. They can't do it right now. We will pursue legislative solutions, but we'd much rather DOE take care of it themselves so that these kids can get to and from school at a reasonable cost, or for free. So, thank you.
Absolutely. And if I could respond real quick, Chair, the idea, you know, I heard the explanation of the student without the transportation for three weeks, and, you know, the things, the data didn't migrate and things of that nature. One of the things that's been made very clear to Glenn and myself with the chancellor is make sure we lean in really as hard as we can to find these places where it's not working. And the full agency is to support, to make sure that this data migrates properly, that we're able to then route the student, that we're able to make sure our customer service team closes, and make sure the kids aren't missing that valuable instructional time. So you can count on for that when you see those.
A municipal ID gets you on the ferry for free. That's what I use my municipal ID for. So every single one of them should get their municipal ID, it's a free ferry with the municipal ID. Nobody knows that but me, but that's true.
I have a bill.
Councilmember Gennaro is here, and Councilmember Velazquez, and now Councilmember Stevens, please ask your questions, and thank you. Municipal ID, free.
Thank you. I just have a few questions. So DOE implemented the ride share option for DOE K-3 summer programming, summer rising during the summer 2022, which allowed adult authorized to pick up if students use one or two ride-sharing services to rides to schools for pickups and then for home their students. The program allowed the choices between ride share options, Uber, and to utilize daily or two-day ride vouchers added by DOE for users in the Uber app and the driver's cooperative. How many, how was this opportunity advertised to parents and summerizing providers when these, for those parties, informed about this program?
We can tag it, John.
You want to talk about the advertising?
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having me. So for summerizing, the ride share was advertised through the transportation coordinators identified at the 400-something sites, and there were parent trainings conducted in the evening in advance of the summerizing rollout.
Okay, because from my feedback from a lot of the parents, they did not know about this. And so just really thinking about how to be more innovative and when planning for next year, like, why wasn't it on the application and things like that? I think that there's other ways we can actually do just some basic advertising, because folks really just didn't know about the program. And it is a very useful one. And then I know you guys already touched on, like, talking about like DHS shelters and things like that, seeing how my district has the most students in shelters in the city. This is really important to me. And since we know that students in temporary housing are already vulnerable and falling behind with school attendance, why is there such a delay in routing them to ensure that they have access to school?
Thank you for the question. What we do is, when we receive, most of the students receive bussing for temporary housing through the normal DHS feed, and they go right to be assigned bus routes. The students that come through our office are the ones that need to get bussing through exception. There is no doubt that our processes, when it comes down to handling that data, needs to be improved. And we're working on that, and I've been meeting with my team about that. But the majority of all the students that are getting bussing for temporary housing does not come through OPT, goes right to the, to the feed, and they are assigned bus routes. But again, I hear other people saying the same thing, and we're going back to look at, part of the modernization and technology that we have now going through is going to address some of those issues. And I hear you, and we're taking that back, and we're working on it.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And just thinking about the number of young people in temporary housing has doubled, so I think the sense of urgency is very much just needed, and making sure that this is a priority of how do we move forward. And I guess just the last, and I guess this is kind of a question, but, and just when we're thinking about students and their development and the importance of after-schools, when students are, they do have a route, they then are not able to go to after-school and participate in extracurricular activities because they have to be picked up typically by three. How is that part of the conversation of thinking about how are we including those things in this? Because we know that students who are participating in after-school programs and these enrichment programs actually do better in school and support their academics enrichments in a much better way. So can you talk about what it looks like to be moving in a place where students can be a part of those enrichments and still get bus servicing?
Yeah, evening bus service is something that we've looked at, and we've thought to expand. Expansion to a third shift, and if you were to say that there was an AM, a PM, and then a second PM, one is largely on where do you derive staff for that purpose, right? And funding of that as well. So it's something we've been looking at. I think Glenn and I are looking to the future about, like, where are those resources? And so, you know, we have drivers, first of all, I wanted to figure out a place where I could stop and just thank our drivers and attendants. When we think about what happened during the pandemic, it was March of 2020, and we stopped paying all contracted service in the city of New York. That impacted the drivers and attendants in a very real way, insofar as they were laid off in a worldwide pandemic with no wages, no pension contributions, and above all else, no healthcare. And so when we talk about the driver shortage and trying to bring people back into the system, we have a fair bit of work to do to re-establish trust. And so, I should have said this at the onset, but I really authentically want to thank our companies for the ability to open and run that September, and thank our drivers and attendants for coming back. And so the drivers are bound by drive times. And so if they were to drive at 5:30 in the morning, to do a pickup at 5:30 at night is a challenge. Not to suggest that Glenn and I are not solutioning and looking at something, we are. After-school programs is definitely on our strategic map, roadmap going forward. And we'll come back to the council with some ideas and some innovations there.
Yeah, I hope that it's not just on the list. I hope that we're actually really thinking about it and digging into it, because I think it is a disservice when we think about the students who need the services the most and would benefit the most are typically the students with IEPs and folks who are in homeless shelters and things like that. And I think that it's been something for us to really be thinking about, and how do we move forward? Because, you know, not only just the bus services, all industries right now are struggling with, you know, getting employment, getting folks to come back to work. So I think we should just be thinking about, you know, what does this look like and how do we support it? And also, too, thinking about how do we work together to think about, how do we make this an option? Because I think one of the things that the city is lacking in is workforce development and actually making these jobs available to people, and having a knowledge of that. We've not been doing a good job overall in all industries, right? So when we speak to most agencies, they're like, oh, we're struggling finding people because we're not doing a good job of setting people up to get those jobs.
I'd like to add one thing to that, and thank you for what you just said about coming up with different ways to get a sustainable workforce. We, man, I think it was a week and a half ago, we met with the chancellor, and we were talking about different options and different scenarios. One of those was about trying to leverage CUNY. One of the suggestions that I got from my staff was seeing if we can get the council or other people to try to assist us in maybe setting up some sort of trade school-type of environment to where students can go and get trained to be bus drivers. CUNY was maybe you will get some sort of financial aid if you want to be a bus driver for a series of years first before you enter whatever your vocation would be. So there's a lot of different methods that we're thinking of. We're trying to also entice our bus companies to make sure that they try to subsidize some of the fees that are associated with becoming a bus driver, CDLs and the like. I also want to mention where Nice Bus, all our bus companies are working on different innovations, but I just want to lift up Nice Bus for one second. They are currently going through a program where they are converting their attendants to become drivers. Right now, they have 39 attendants that are now in the process of becoming bus drivers. That's something that looks like it's working. We want to expand that through the rest of the bus companies. I plan on having meetings with all the bus companies to talk about those successes. We have some other bus companies, like Total Bus, I'm just going to lift them up as well, that I sat down with them to go through their recruitment strategies and how they reach out to even the most tepid interest person to make sure they get them on the hook to try to make them become bus drivers. And they, they taught me a lot with advertising to get drivers, because I have many years doing it, but they have something that they're working with. So we're trying to leverage all ideas. We're not suppressing anyone's idea, because this is a critical situation we're in with the driver shortage. But I just wanted to lift up those things for this discussion.
Yeah, no, definitely. And even thinking out, I don't know why we have to wait, and partner with CUNY, DOE can be working with high school students, right? To get their CDLs and get those things, because there's a lot of high school students and transfer high schools that can be working on those things. And I think that sometimes we're just a little lazy about really trying to set people up to get these jobs and trying to pass the buck. So I think it's important for us to be just being a little bit more creative. But thank you, guys, and I appreciate all the work you're doing.
Thank you, Councilmember Dinowitz. It's his birthday. I hate birthdays, but happy
You know, thanks for the tepid applause. You know who else hates birthdays, Chair Brewer?
Me.
Thanks. Yeah, it was a secret. Secret's out. Well, first, congratulations on being a grandpa. I hear it's great.
Yeah, yes.
That's what my parents tell me. I don't know. Maybe I'll find out one day. Second, I do, I would be remiss if I didn't thank you. You know, we had an asylum seeker shelter open up in my, in my district, and when they needed a bus stop, you put one in right away, a stop for those kids. And I do want to thank you for that, for being, in that instance, extremely responsive to the needs of those kids and my community. Can you, can you outline again the threshold for family, for students using the ride share program? You said it was if there is an outage, if there is certain nursing, if they need a nurse, and was there a third instance?
The third instance I mentioned was that if, like, it usually takes five to seven days, maybe a little bit longer, depending what the circumstances are. But we noticed that it's, it's taking an inordinate amount of time to get that student sign a bus route.
So like a stop, okay, got it, like a stopgap. How long, on average, is a student on a bus? From the time they're picked up in the morning to the time they're dropped off at school, or the time they're picked up at school to the time they drop back off at home?
So those types of reports are largely self-reported, so we can do some basic analytics. Our future program, the Strides Program, and the modernization efforts with VIA will give us actual drive times. So we can come back and kind of carve out, the general education routes are shortest. And one of the things the council should know is because general education routes are five miles or less, right? And so the goal here in partnership and the commitment of the leadership here is to make sure that we get program closer to residents and reduce travel times. But I think we have some analytics we could share, probably post-
Yeah, that would be really important because I'm getting calls in my office about, the most recent one was a kid who was getting home at six o'clock. At six o'clock, they probably get out of school 2:50, 3 o'clock probably the latest. Stuck kids on the bus for three hours.
We'll look at that specific case. We do have, we do have some distance challenges. We, like, we do have examples and outliers and maybe much like in this instance, where we have like six families from the South Shore Staten Island going to Glen Clover Long Island. And that is, that is a very difficult commute. And so what we'd like to do is to see which instance this is. We do have some students in the Bronx going to Queens and Bronx to Manhattan.
Right, I'm not, right, I'm not talking about, you know, I know there are students who go to honors programs. I'm not talking about them. I'm talking about students who are getting picked up. And then, in the case of this particular bus, going from school to school to school, and maybe it's within five miles, maybe it's not. But in the city, driving in New York City, five miles could often be a lot and it's probably more than that. So I'm more interested in the time than the distance. I appreciate you addressing my specific need and we'll certainly reach out about that. But of course, it isn't just about the families that are calling my office because for every family that calls my office with their concerns about the length of time their kid's on the bus, there's more that aren't calling my office or more that aren't calling 311. And I think it's important to recognize that these are children. And there are many adults here who couldn't be in one place for three hours without running into some problems. And so have you gotten other reports of accidents on the bus, things of that nature? Or is that all just self-reported as well?
So the companies are required and we post those data sets publicly. We could share them with you after the hearing. But yes, they're required to report in contractual requirements. If there's any accident, breakdown, delay.
Sorry, I meant like a bodily accident. Because if a kid's on a bus.
We do report, occurrence reporting for any accidents.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about kids and, you know, and sometimes, and very often kids with disabilities, right? And as I said, you know, adults would have a hard time with that. Imagine kids. So I would love, that would shed some light on the problem that kids are on the bus too long. So that's first. And I really would like that data on how long students are actually on the bus. Does the DOE have a threshold for what you believe would be too long, right? You're going to, you're going to send me the data and you're going to say, a kid was on the bus three hours. Cool, here it is. Or do you have a number that you've decided, you know what, that kid's on the bus too long? Let's get them a new route or let's do something different. What is your number?
Yeah, I'll do that, yes. Generally, students that travel within borough will not have routes longer than 90 minutes if they travel. That'll be the longest the route would be if they travel within borough. Some burrows are smaller, so those, that, the impact will be different. But within borough, it's 90 minutes. These are students that don't have an IEP mandate for limited time travel. These are the students that do not have that mandate. And between borough, generally, the bus routes are two hours or less. Generally, that'd be the longest that they would be.
Okay, I do want to point out that 75 minutes is the number that the DOE, that the chancellor has identified as if you travel more than 75 minutes, that entitles you to a hardship transfer. That's in the chancellor's regulations. So if you're going by 90 minutes, you're going by 15 minutes longer than the actual chancellor's regulation. If that's your threshold. So my last question is, you said the ride shares for people who are, for students who are, have a nurse, if there's an outage, or if they're still planning their bus route. Would you consider adding to that threshold the students who have exceedingly long bus routes, longer than 75 minutes, to the students who are eligible for the ride share program? Would you consider adding that?
So for students that have the extended, if there's a route that's assembled that doesn't perform at the time that we'd like it to, there are options of creating a new route. That's typically what the ridership team does, is they add a separate new route. Not necessarily a singleton, not just, although those do happen. In instances of the ones I mentioned before where there's a really elongated distance, there are single ride offerings that we do provide.
I'm talking about a systemic problem, sort of a, a solution, which is that if number of students, a number of students who are calling my office, well, the parents are really, are having trips longer than 75 minutes, which is the threshold that is listed in the chancellor's regulations, if that could also be a qualification for ride share. Or for some other solution, I mean, there's a bus shortage, right? So this is one option.
Yeah, we'll get back to you about that and also about the 75 minutes as well. But any student that has IEP mandates and we, once that's lifted to us, that's not being addressed, we resolve those as quickly as possible. However, if we come up with a circumstance that we cannot resolve it, then those students will be eligible for ride share as well.
Okay, I'm over my time and I just want to stress one thing. Councilmember Stevens had said previously, which is the students not being able to access after school programs. And what I don't want to be lost in this is high school students, where there typically isn't as much of a critical mass of students because the high school students who are eligible for bus service have IEPs. And so there may be far fewer of them. And I don't want them to get lost in all this. There's going to be less of a critical mass of them. But they, I've had it over the years where they weren't able to engage in after school programs. They fell further behind because of, because they had to catch their bus. So please, as you take Councilmember Stevens' suggestion into consideration, be deliberate about including high school students' IEPs. Thank you, Chair Joseph and Chair Brewer. And thank you, DOE.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Christian.
Thank you so much, Chair Joseph and Chair Brewer, for today's important hearing. I think my colleagues have made a number of important points. Kevin, it's good to see you too. We worked together before around PPE for our schools early on in the year and you did great work then and I really appreciate all your responsiveness on those issues. I just have one question, as I mentioned, I think my colleagues have raised a number of points that are really critical when it comes to busing service. One more I wanted to raise on a slightly different angle is that there are still a number of students, especially in my district, where we're bounded by Northern Boulevard on the north and Queens Boulevard on the south, both that are very dangerous highways. They've both been called boulevards of death because of the number of pedestrian fatalities there, children, seniors. And it concerns me a lot that for a number of school students, they are forced to cross either Northern Boulevard or Queens Boulevard to get to school. And so one example and one question I want to bring up in particular was PS7 in Elmhurst, where before, the children had busing service to go across Queens Boulevard. And two years ago, OPT removed the bus service, saying that Queens Boulevard is now safer, which I entirely disagree with. It's a very, very dangerous highway and there should be, under no circumstances, children having to cross it to get to school. I do know that families have been applying for exemptions to be able to get bus service. And I think the statistic is something like 60% or so have been granted those exemptions. So my question is, at that rate, and especially given the larger issue of the real dangers for children going to school across Queens Boulevard, can you all look into reinstating the bus service that was removed two years ago for PS7? And if you have already, I'd love to hear your thoughts about it too.
First, thank you for the question. One of the things we did do is look at wholesale exceptions and looked at the process rather than saying end all. We would look at them and you said the approval rate is around 60%. We'll go back and look at these two in particular. I know John, in particular, working with DOT and others about how do we make the area safe. But I will commit to coming back to you and to the community and looking at that area and see what we can do. Absolutely.
I appreciate that. And any way to reinstate the bus service, I think, would be very, very critical for the families there who, like I said before, are right now required to cross Queens Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Chairs Brewer and Joseph. I have a couple of questions. The first one, I'm curious about the VIA pilot rollout. In my experience, I tend to be very apprehensive about the administration's pilot rollouts of anything tech-related. As I understand it, it lives in District 26 right now, but it's, even then, it's not fully accessible to all District 26 families. So I'm just curious if you can speak to, if there was a level of service design considered in this, the application? And if there was any consideration or what the communication was with parents on how to, essentially how to make it user-friendly? My additional concern is in those examples where there are families who, whose children are being picked up, who are curious about wait times, lateness, but who are not going to be using the app. Does the call center provide that resources to them? And additionally, is there training, once we get this app? Let's say it looks stellar, you know, once this pilot is done and we're something we can all be proud of, what is the kind of training that you are all prepared to provide to families?
Yeah, so I think high level, we have met with a variety of stakeholders in developing of the training module. I find VIA to be a phenomenal partner in this space, both in terms of content development and ultimately in messaging. So what I'd like to do with your team, we are looking for opportunities. And I said earlier, we're looking to go to each council district and share the message, so to speak. But there is going to be web platform-based information, there'll be school-based trainings. They did factor in parental voice, user voice. And kind of like along the modules, you could see growth over time. Some of the PowerPoint decks I've seen are lengthy in words of they're going as far as, you know, 60 pages to show all of the routing sequences and the school-based modules and the consoles and the reports. Then there's the more version that you want to live in, like what's the experience for the family to be like? And so it'll be shorter. So I would suggest that we set time and space for potential you to meet with us and our VIA partners. I think you'll find them dynamic and responsive and they definitely look to seek feedback. And so I would use this opportunity to connect us.
Absolutely, thank you. My next question is a little bit going off of what Councilmember Ressler mentioned, which is a particular school in my district where we have families that are interested in enrolling their students in these schools. But obviously, the transportation is an issue. And something that this council's been hearing a lot and working with the DOE on a lot is enrollment, citywide. Under enrollment is a huge issue. Does your office work with the DOE's Office of Enrollment in these instances? For example, School District 14, we're very lucky to get quite a number of magnet grants because we've been experiencing under enrollment for close to two decades. So our realistic scenario is that we have parents who, families who live far from the school that need transportation, who maybe don't qualify for this subsidy. So is your team working with the Office of Enrollment? Or how does, how does that marriage work to solve for some of our districts' under enrollment issues?
Absolutely. We follow service need and work with the Office of Student Enrollment. One of the more recent examples is within District 15 pursued a lot of work around diversity in schools and diversity enrollment. Our team, I don't know if many knew it, District 15 didn't receive yellow bus service. Most students were just walking, if you will, to school. And any student that needed an IEP, transportation modification, was provided that. So we didn't necessarily have like large swaths of yellow bus going through District 15. After the diversity work we did, we did see that. And so when we saw the pattern and the trend, we worked very closely with each school and developed bus routes there in District 15, specifically general education. I use that as an example to say, yes, we do partner and would seek to continue partnering with districts and enrollment offices.
And my last question is related to safety. So I'm very concerned at the amount of data that we have. I know it hasn't been updated, I'm looking at the report since 2019. But I'm concerned, like all of my colleagues are, about safety violations, about red camera violations. What authority do you all have to force a bus company to do right? Or to force a bus company in the instances where they have an egregious amount of violations to really mandate that they take safety seriously? What is the turnaround for removing a contract in these instances where we really feel like they're being colossally unsafe on the roads for, you know, pedestrians and our children alike?
Yeah, so if there are instances of poor driver behavior, we work with the companies and the drivers' union to improve that. If there's instances where there's vehicles, I think you said red light cameras passing, going through, companies are responsible for that and ultimately making sure drivers are held accountable as well. We do have onboard technology now. We do have Geotab, which is underlying program that tracks both speed, harsh braking, cornering. Companies have scorecards and they use that to work with their employees around safe driving. If you look at the roll-up data in our system, we're very confident that schools, I mean, school companies are getting the messaging around safe driving. And so if there are specific instances, we'd like to look at it. But we entered our drivers into the New York City program, the Vision Zero program. They received training through that. That was an invasion of about two years ago. And we found that to be very successful. I think the drivers' exposure into that program, coupled with the knowledge that the Geotab is tracking their vehicle diagnostics, it's helped us see a great improvement in that regard.
Thank you.
Councilmember Neve.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon and thank you, Councilmembers Brewer and Joseph, for this critically important hearing. And thank you, Kevin and Glenn, for your responses to my colleagues' thoughtful questions. I'd like to do a deep dive about the impact of busing delays and non-compliant bus routes for students with IEPs. This is one of the top issues, education constituent issues that I hear about frequently in my district. We know how dangerous it is when the needs outlined in student IEPs around school transportation are not met, students' medical issues are exacerbated, and their delayed arrival to school contributes to loss of critical classroom time and learning. So I'd like some data. Of the approximately 150,000 students that OPT transports through contracted bus services, how many of those students have IEPs?
65,000.
65,000, okay. And then since the start of the school year, how many of those students have experienced delays or trips longer than is allowed in their IEP?
So with the, the way the data collection system is set up now, it's self-reported. So I can't say with great confidence which number is 100% accurate because the VIA solution is designed to give me that, to give me the start time of the route, the drive time, if you will, and the session time of the school. So those analytics right now are self-reported. It's probably something we could generate based on what we have now. So you want IEP students, on-time arrival through September, October, November?
Yes, that would be helpful. And then I'd like to compare to the same time last year.
And just bear in mind, the solution in our modernization efforts is to get us to a place where I can tell you with great assurance, this route associated with this student, associated with this school, and here's the output.
When do you think that might be available?
So right now, the launch, the next launch is that everyone, that's the bigger, when we move out of 26, so to speak, and go to 75, if the program allows and the technology allows, we'll be moving much quicker through the spring. That's something I'd like to come back with you on. I say, I don't want to speak until I'm very confident that, yes, all systems go, advance.
Spring '23, spring '23, is that what you're saying?
I hesitate to give because the technology, we want to get it right before we advance. So I'll come back to you on that.
So whatever data you can provide would be sufficient for the time being?
Based on what we have now, yes.
And then what do you mean by self-reporting? Could you just describe what that requires?
So for an example, if a bus yard has 250 buses and they're ready to roll out and they're, let's just say they're on Atlantic Avenue and they're ready to roll out. Let's use, just an example of like Logan Bus Company. If there's an accident on the belt or there's something right nearby Atlantic Avenue, the bus company may call in and say, look, I got 200 that I can't get out. I'm going to call this as a potential traffic. And so 75% of those breakdowns, if you've seen the report, show that it's from traffic and congestion. So sometimes that's an example of like, these buses make it out and get to school there before the session time and they may not be late. And so it's an interesting way of looking at it, the current state versus what our future state will be. Our future state will give us real data.
Got it. So this is contingent on the driver?
Or the school, or the family, saying they're late.
And then from June to September of this year, how many complaints were filed about students not being transported in a bus that is air-conditioned, as outlined in their IEP?
I'm going to have to get that information to you. We're still tabulating some of that. I will get that to you.
Okay, and this is information that you collect?
Yeah, we collect, definitely.
Great, thank you. And then how many violations were issued as a result of those instances? Are you also able to provide that data?
Yeah, so what essentially happens, if on any, and all of our students that require IEP air conditioning get it, if there's an instance where it broke and it was fixed, that wouldn't necessarily be a violation because it's a mechanical system that failed. If it was a mechanical system that broke and was not repaired or it was one of those things where they couldn't, they would, one, take it out of service. But two, we don't necessarily, if it's fixed immediately, like it was in the middle of the run and they had to bring it in for service, a mechanical system failed, I don't think those cases are ones that we.
Is that nuance written out in the data that you'll share with us?
We can get you some, absolutely.
Okay, great. And then what specific protocol is in place to hold contracted bus providers who are in violation of student IEPs accountable?
Yeah, so any violation is, the companies are, per their contract, issued liquidated damages and that's essentially monetary damage that is assessed. And they do have a process by which they can refute, but we also have a process which we stand by.
So currently, there's monetary fines. And then for repeat violations, is there a process of excluding or eliminating contracts?
We have liquidated damages and also have problematic routes. Glenn would, in theory, Glenn in practice would take the route and assign it to a new vendor if it was a problematic route.
Chairs, do I have permission to wrap up?
Chairs, do I have permission to wrap up? As part of the 2019 City Council legislation package around improving school busing, bus drivers were required to take part in additional training if they transport students with disabilities. What is the status of implementation of this additional training?
Yeah, through the Vision Zero, they went through the Vision Zero training, absolutely.
So the, the
We added training days in the contract after that and so they were provided different opportunities, Glenn, I know we speak about the topics that they cover, but it's also through the State Education Department.
So specifically for drivers who are driving students with disabilities?
There was, there was, there was certainly glucagen training that was more recent, but you have the de-escalation
So you're saying all drivers?
Not, not for glucagen, for specific students, but go ahead, Glenn.
Yes, I meant with, just to make sure that if it's part of that, what you're saying about what happened in 2019, I know I meet with the bus companies regularly and I have my inspection unit also check that two times a year, they have training and then they have one major refresher training that deals with how to deal with students with disabilities and also with some other, I guess, driver requirements as well. But specifically, I was assured that these things are happening, I will be following through with my fleet service department to make sure that this is actually happening. My understanding that it is, but for me to tell you exactly with assurances that it is, I'm, we'll go back and get that back to you. But these bus companies are doing these refresher trainings, especially around how to deal with students with disabilities and how those disabilities manifest themselves.
Great. And then several of my constituents have shared the challenges of getting information and assistance from OPT, particularly when their children's routes have been noncompliant with their IEPs. What is being done to improve on the process for parents to escalate and reliably resolve these issues?
So we could start with, I mentioned earlier about each school having the transportation coordinator there and then having the borough, the district, each district having a transportation liaison assigned. Those individuals are meant to support where these local issues are manifesting and then also the transportation liaisons receive direct training from OPT. And John leads that work, I don't know, John, if you want to add anything on that regard?
Sure, yeah, I think it's important to know where we came from in the call center and the escalation path. So four years ago, 2018, when Kevin took over this work, there was one call center number and schools and parents were told to call the same call center line. It was totally flooded, no one could get through, the wait times were astronomical and no one got answers. We're trying to shift away from that call center as the catch-all for everything and build more of a school support model where parents are working more closely with the the transportation coordinators at the school level, who then escalate to the dedicated network of support through our school support team that is relatively new in OPT. It's, we're in the third year of that. So we're trying to, rather than telling parent or school, call a call the hotline and good luck, we're developing a more of a dedicated pipeline for this to happen where people don't feel they're on their own navigating bureaucracy.
Yeah, that's really wonderful that schools have their own individual coordinator plus a district-wide transportation liaison. And are they able to assist adequately in languages that are non-English?
So we have a Linguistica hotline that helps for supporting parents who, if the person they're talking to in the call center or the transportation liaison in OPT doesn't speak the language at hand, they work with a translation hotline.
And I'll follow up about the translation hotline over email. And then finally, we know that many of these issues stem from a school bus driver shortage. What steps is the DOE taking to make these jobs more desirable, including around increased wage and additional benefits? And is there any discussion of reinstating the pro-worker employee protection provisions that the Bloomberg administration removed in 2013?
So one of the things, when you talk about increasing the workforce, it's about recruitment and retention of the current workforce. So we talk to our companies daily, there is, Glenn mentioned, hiring incentives, we're talking about pipelines to the work. There has been a change in landscape where where our drivers have been recruited to go elsewhere. So we're, we're, we're looking to certainly have competitive salary advancements at the company level. We do look, we don't see a disparity, if you will, between a a non-employment protection company and an employment that all companies have have driver concerns. So it is something where we've been looking at and we hope, to Councilman Wrestler's points earlier, to to learn a little bit more about how to recruit and retain as an agency. We rely on contracted service and and we have since 1979, I think Jimmy Carter was president at the time, and so the city has now started a not-for-profit to help us learn a little bit more about what we don't know in the busing industry. So we'll come back to you on recruitment strategies, but we do know that that Matt Berlin, who heads the Nice Bus Not-for-Profit, is is in earnest working on this issue around staffing. So we hope to learn more lessons there.
Thank you and we'll stay engaged. Thank you for your responses.
Chair Joseph?
We know that, for example, how much does the DOE spend on bus, busing per year?
1.7 billion, one, yeah.
Almost $2 billion, correct?
Yeah.
Just for the record. So why isn't the inclusion of EPP part of the overall process to retain veteran drivers? Because we talked about shortage, that's one of the number one things I've been hearing a lot, that's constant in our conversation, there's a shortage of drivers.
Yeah, that's something that that's obviously been in the news over time and something that was just noted that were removed from contracts in 2013 and 14, ultimately resulting in a bus strike. The previous administration had supported EPPs and talked about, you know, legislation that we were supportive in Albany. We actually put, the previous administration put out a bid with EPPs in in the bus contracts, to which was restrained and that we cannot use that bid. There's currently remains a restraining order on that bid. But Albany, between the Senate and Assembly, did pass legislation. This would require a legislative solution, only to be vetoed at the time by the governor. And so that's where it is now. Employee protection provisions being placed in a contract would require a state legislative solution.
Okay, thank you. So your contracts is soon to expire. What are we going to renew and renewing, when we renew, what new, what new ideas are we going to put into that contract? So my parents are not calling me
Yeah.
constantly about my child is not being picked up or the bus is delayed?
Absolutely, the constituent experience is foundational in terms of how we think about next steps. To your point, the contracts will expire in 2025. We're very much interested in greater flexibility, I think it was noted a couple of times about how do we get evening service and what is that model of service delivery? Certainly, we've heard today around increased accountabilities to make sure that that we're holding folks accountable to that work. So I think when you, when we look at the next iteration of what we're looking to do, certainly we want to, and getting back to Councilman Wrestler's point of of the Nice Bus, what have we learned differently? What are the things we didn't know, so to speak, about? And and how do we make sure we have salary commiserate with retention of drivers and attendance in the workforce? Certainly about a pipeline, do we sketch out a pipeline for recruitment and development within companies? So there's a lot of things out there, something we definitely have heads down and thinking about, but this type of environment helps shape, not necessarily right here in the moment, as we draw back and reflect on comments, what are the things we need to include around responsiveness to families and and reduction in any wait time around service?
Absolutely, we have to start looking at it now and the next go around has to be student-centered, not adults. We have to remember the children that we're picking up as the experience. Most, a lot of my D75 students I hear, this is one of their most joyous time to go to school. They want to be on the bus, they want to be in the school buildings with their peers. They don't want to be sitting around a bus, driving around the city for two, three hours when their school is literally 20 minutes away. So that's one of the experiences we want to make sure. Another thing, prevailing wages, that that came across my desk a lot, prevailing wages and is to retain drivers and matrons. What does that look like in going into negotiation in 2025? That should also be at the table.
Absolutely, something that we talk to companies about and and companies, and I think folks have talked about it before, with the, the legacy companies, the EPP companies that have those sliding scales, that we worked previously, the previous administration, when there was threat of strike, around what those wages would look like. And so the companies partner with their affiliated unions, whether they're the Teamsters or 1181, to make sure that these discussions are happening in real time. And what is the city's part in obligating the companies to make sure that they're in a good place to do this very work?
And this $2 billion bus transportation budget, any of them MWBEs that are part of this process?
We have a few companies that are headed up by MWBE. That is, we're leaning into that as well, but not just the bus contracts, but all contracts that OPT ventures into. We're looking through that prism to, for MWBE, but certainly in in the next negotiations that that will be where this administration and quite frankly, us will be leaning into as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Brewer, I'll come back.
Okay, thank you. I wanted just to get some data, I know you said 150,000 students, 65 with IEP. So I'm just wondering, of those 65, how many are in the, I guess I call them 1 to 32 districts? And then how many are in D75?
For students that are in District 1 through 32, we have 20,000 students in District 1 through 32.
Okay, so in the balance, are we in D75?
In D75, we have 20,000.
How about charter schools, do you know?
Yes, charter schools, we have 2.6, 2.6,000
Okay.
in charter schools.
All right, and then how about a state-approved, non-public schools or state-supported schools?
We have 4,000 that are in non-public schools and then other private schools, it's 5.4,000.
It's five, it's what, in the private schools?
5,400.
5,400, okay. And then how many, maybe it's fluctuating, but how many students in temporary housing receive bus service? I'm sure that's fluctuates more.
It does, currently we have 4,000 students.
Okay. And then, I don't, I assume you can't break it down by domestic violence because that's a, sometimes hard to break down?
Yeah.
And how many students living in shelter receive IEP mandated bus service and how many receive non-IEP mandated bus service, if you have that information?
Well, I will say, the students that have IEP bus service, they get their service through the normal streams that students get busing with IEP, so we cannot identify that.
So that would be in the 4,000 range?
Yeah, but we do have like 900 exceptions that we have processed for students
900 exceptions, okay. That's what was my other question. Do we know how many absences per day can be attributed to problems with school bus service? Is that the 313 or 15 that we were talking about? Is there?
I'm sure that contributes to it, but we will have to get that number back to you.
And then how do you create new bus routes? Is that something that VIA is going to work with you on in terms of new bus routes? How how do they get created?
Yes, actually, in the routing platform, we we are putting certain algorithms in there that that fall in line with with the Chancellor of Regulations say as well. So there, no doubt, the routes should be more efficient than they are today. There still needs to be some human intervention as well, but yes, the the main goal of it is to make routes more efficient, follow the logistical challenges that the city has and make sure that the grid that everyone follows is within the routing platform. It's going to upgrade the platform we use now. Our platform is is decades old and this is, this will bring it into the 21st century.
Okay, obviously legislation in Albany passed stating smaller class size. Are you taking that into account for the future? Because if you have smaller class size, obviously you're going to have maybe a different routes, different children, et cetera. Are you thinking about that and how planning is going for that potential increase in demand?
Yeah, we we consider all different initiatives that the
That's the John Lew bill that I like very much.
Yes, I understand that. Yeah, all initiatives and any, anything that impacts the classroom is something that we do work with as far as busing is concerned. But I would be remiss to say that the the current status, status of the driver issue kind of precludes us for doing some of the things we like to lean into, but yes, we do consider the classroom as part of what we do.
The next, maybe we talked about this, but how many students who needed busing began this school year without a bus route in place? Do you have that number?
Yeah, all the, all the students that requested busing did have a bus route in place. However, with the shortage of drivers, those were the the families that were offered rideshare as a solution, but everyone did have a bus route in place and those that did not, because there wasn't active, were issued rideshare.
So when you spoke, you said, could be, there were a lot of questions about rideshare. When you spoke, you indicated that it's complicated to put in place. What what are the complications with rideshare? Obviously funding, because always funding, but are there other complications in terms of rideshare? You you kind of mentioned that in passing.
So I can take this one. The way we, the model for rideshares, we have to offer parents more than one choice of companies. So first, what we need to do is verify that the route is in fact out of service, that's not just running late on that day and is there, is there in fact no driver?
You got the three criteria that you mentioned earlier, yep.
Right, and then from there, we work with schools to get the information out to parents saying you have company A or company B, parent makes the choice and then we provision the service. So there is a little bit of a timeline, just due to some, due to the policy and the legal ramifications involved with having the the solution in place at all.
When you say a little bit of a timeline, like a week or?
Not that long, days.
Days?
Yeah.
Okay, so those days, I guess the child's not in school, which is sort of what we're talking about. Okay, that's, that's a challenge, as we know. I think it was an interesting idea, all comes back to two things, technology and drivers. It seems to be those are your, if you can solve those two problems, we'll have a much better system. So with the notion of taking the attendants and making them drivers, then who's going to be the attendants? How are you, what can we do to help with this bus driver issue? Do we mandate that CUNY do something, the high schools do something? Is it a funding request, a new needs? What is it that would help? Because obviously if you have, the other problem too is, you know, sometimes the paras end up being helpful on the bus and they're not trained to do that. I get that complaint a lot. They're not trained to take care of, you know, 20 kids, they have their one and all of a sudden, they're in charge because there's nobody else to do so. So how are you thinking about if the drivers are a problem, are the attendants a problem, et cetera?
No, I, it's easier to recruit an attendant than it is to recruit a driver.
Okay.
So we we wouldn't want to create a different problem by trying to solve one other problem. Also to go back to your comment about having a parrot on the bus and then his 20 other children, there's always an attendant, a bus cannot, a bus that traverses students with disabilities that have IEPs mandating busing will not have a bus that does not have an attendant. So, so yes, but there are a lot of kids on a bus and they do, it is a lot of challenges that way though.
And sometimes the attendants are just able to do it and they do it, but there's a lot of challenges even in that.
But going back to what you said about your help, it it's all of the above. Everyone, and I can't stress this enough, this is a problem that involves all of us in the city. This is a nationwide problem, so CUNY, the high schools, one thing I want to mention about the high school, because there is a 21-year-old limit as far as CDL drivers, so that's part of the issue there with high schools. But yes, all agencies, all of us have to work on this problem and any ideas that you have, Chair Brewer, is welcome. Kevin mentioned about meeting in smaller settings to have conversations, I welcome that, as many as necessary, but everything is required here.
I know this sounds quite Pollyannish, but if we could get the darn working papers for the asylum seekers, you could have all your drivers very quickly. I, this, the final question I have is just trying to figure out the timing on all of this because obviously 2023 is a new year and I'm wanting to know if you're talking about trying to fix some of these algorithms and GPS by next year, but the driver situation is still going to be real one, you're not going to fix that by 2023, I assume. How else are we going to get, is it just going to be more rideshare? How are you going to get more kids to school on time? With a driver shortage, we're still working on the algorithms, does this mean more rideshare? I'm trying to figure out how we're going to get kids to school on time for next year, if we're still in the in-between stages.
Yeah, I think it is our hope to to bring ourselves back to full strength at the bus company staffing level, but ultimately looking at any of the solutions that help families meet them where they are. And so I imagine the rideshare will be in place for those hardship scenarios, but also that the companies will continue to recruit and retain staff. We talk to them daily, we meet at their yards, it is an ongoing conversation, but it is our hope that we're back to full strength to to pre-pandemic levels.
Councilmember Joseph?
Thank you, Chair Brewer. Over the summer, I received quite a few phone calls, so I had to, I just thought of this again. The form of reimbursement for parents, does the DOE receive? What percentage of them does the DOE accept and pay for in terms of transportation for parents? There are parents who called and said they were not paid for reimbursement.
For, for any parent that that used their own, they laid out the money, we'll reimburse them. John has a process for that and a team, the ridership team actually looks into those cases. If there are any unpaid currently, we'd like to know about those and get them done.
How long does that process take?
It shouldn't take, now, if you're pointing that it happened in summer, it shouldn't take this long, no. It should, should be a matter, one, we have to verify that the actual existed right before, we have some accountabilities before we remit payment, but we'll make sure that it happens quicker.[1786.89] that it happens quicker. That was, this was a new for us endeavor to get on rideshare. This is something, now that we have the prepaid option for the family, where they get the voucher, and it's more of just a booking experience rather than laying out. But anybody that laid out and didn't get back, we should be able to resolve in just a matter of days.
What's the criteria for reimbursement? Is that told to the parents as well?
Yes.
So reimbursement is basically the busing wasn't in place, and it's for students who are mandated to receive it but did not have it. That's basically the high-level qualification for it.
They submit a receipt to you?
Yep.
And what the service was and how much?
Documentation, apply, and then we look, there's a verification process on our end, and then we issue the payment after that.
Okay, thank you. Last month, you testified that you were in the process of terminating a bus company for contract for poor performance. How is that proceeding? And what can you share publicly?
What I can say is that it's a very arduous process. So we're still in the process. I really can't share anymore, but it is a lengthy, arduous process that we're committed to. And that's pretty much where I can.
Okay, I can respect. The Nice Bus recently took over the formerly served routes by Reliant. Or what do the board members look like? What are the backgrounds? Is, why is this information not updated on the website?
I'll make sure I go back today and look at the website. That should be updated. And Matt Berlin can talk all about the board composition and and things that they're doing currently. But if the website is not current, I didn't know that, and I'll get back to him there.
That's okay. I know earlier, my colleague talked about Nice Bus, how much they, so are they outperforming Reliant? And what are the specific metric you use to judge that? What was the criteria for for Nice Bus earlier? You said it was a real reliable service. What was the metric? What can, can other bus companies follow that model?
So, right, so we, in terms of on-time arrival, in terms of staffing full-time, in terms of the ability, we were talking, I think, about innovating in the space where they got a grant through the EPA for 25 electric buses. That's, that is a big award, and an $8 million grant for innovation around electric buses. And so they're doing well in that regard. And then what will, they started their first September this year, and we're looking at lessons learned now currently as compared to other companies. But I would say, full-time staffing, on-time arrival, you know, less complaints, things of that nature.
One thing I will add is, when I have conversations with Nice Bus and with the other bus companies, they're similar, but they differ in one regard. I've never, how much something costs never enters into the calculus. It's really about just getting a driver to where they have to go. If we talk about different things, about how to improve service, that never enters the calculus. So that much, I will say, as far as the differences that that could be expanded through the whole system.
Yeah, that's what we want, because at the end, again, it's Children's Center to make sure my students are getting to and from home and school and having the best educational experience we can provide. I noticed, I was outside sometime last week about an announcement of a bus, electric buses. I know we're the recipient of it. How much, when will that flow into the OPT contract? Contractor Consolidated Bus was mentioned announcement. They will own the electric buses. What does that look like for us? I know where climate justice is very important for us.
Yeah, so so the EPA was gracious under the infrastructure, the Biden infrastructure bill, to to grant these electric buses. So Consolidated Bus Company received 25 of those awards through a bus manufacturer. That was the grantee. Nice Bus received 25 of the electric buses. Joe Faz received one of the electric buses. And so we will be following up with the bus manufacturer who won the award to to build these buses. We're very excited to learn about that. We have three electric buses operating at Nice Bus currently. And it's a new space. There's 30 registered electric buses in the state of New York currently. As you know, we're roughly moving around 9,000 buses. So we're looking for the market to mature. We're looking for the technology to advance, and certainly learn how it works in the city landscape. But the electric bus work is something we're very much committed to. And obviously, by 2035, must get to.
Absolutely. Thank you. Chair Brewer?
Yeah, one other question. So the outside contracts are obviously for call center, and is VIA internal? That's a contract, I assume.
It's contract, absolutely.
Okay. Are there other big entities that you're working with to try to bring this challenging policy to a conclusion? Are there other big entities, those two are the big contracts, obviously working with the bus companies, but things that are more outside bus transportation?
Running concurrent with VIA, we do have Edgelog. Glenn talked a little bit about the the previous routing. We're going to hold on to that for a little bit longer, but it's not a large sum. It's more about data integrity, data continuity as we move into the routing algorithm with VIA. But right now, the biggest ones are our call center and the strides program with VIA about modernization of our systems.
Okay, all right. I think that. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. And I know that there will be many questions, and we appreciate the follow-up. If we have more questions, we'll put it in writing. But we thank you. We know how committed you are. But we will have to figure this out. This is not something to leave for decades more. Thank you very much.
Our next conversation will be about how great the bussing services for our New York City students. So you have homework. I always give homework as a forever educator. You have homework.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairs. We will now turn to public testimony. We will be limiting public testimony today to three minutes each. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. So our first in-person panelist who can come up and have a seat will be Janelle Canals with Advocates for Children, Anna Arkin Gallagher with Brooklyn Defender Services, Ruth Guillaume, and Florence Schommer. However, we're going to start with virtual testimony from Thomas Fredt with ATU Local 1181. And then we'll hear from our first witness panel before returning to all virtual panelists. So you four can come have a seat, but we're going to hear from Local 1181 first, virtually.
Your time will begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and Chair Brewer, and members of the Committee on Education, the Committee on Oversight and Investigations. My name is Thomas Fredt. I am the president of Local 1181-1061 of the Amalgamated Transit Union. I want to thank you for holding this important hearing and for the opportunity to testify before you. Local 1181 represents nearly 9,000 school bus drivers, attendants, and mechanics, the majority of New York City's school bus workers, who transport and care for our city's schoolchildren each day. A large portion of the students that the members of Local 1181 transport and attend to our children with special needs, who require specialized care. The hard-working men and women of Local 1181 take pride in the work they do transporting our city's most precious cargo. As you may know, at the end of the school year, Local 1181's collective bargaining agreements with the school bus companies are set to expire. As we enter negotiations, we ask for your continued advocacy and partnership to ensure fair extensions and labor peace. We are approaching the 10-year anniversary of the 2012-2013 citywide school bus strike, caused in no small part by Bloomberg's administration's decision to eliminate the employee protection provisions, EPP, from certain school bus contracts. We continue to deal with the impacts of that decision, which destabilized the entire school bus industry, drove down wages and benefits that have been built over decades of collective bargaining, deprived workers, both union and non-union alike, of industry-wide seniority in hiring and layoffs protections, and saddled the city and legacy school bus companies with substantial pension withdrawal liability. An additional consequence of all these changes in working conditions and base pay and fringe benefit levels has been significant school bus driver shortage of approximately 500 drivers. School bus drivers, attendants, and mechanics are some of the most dedicated workers there are. Those that have been long-term employees in the industry are experienced, qualified, and trained workforce that have the oftentimes thankless jobs of protecting tens of thousands of children as they make their journey from home to school and back. However, if sufficient job security and wage and benefit levels are not restored, it will become harder and harder to recruit and retain workers to do these jobs. The first step along this path is adoption of a fair contract with wages and benefits.
Time has expired.
Sorry.
Go ahead, continue. You can sum up. Go ahead.
Thank you. So again, for the hard-working men and women in career in this industry, your voice will help us achieve improved recruitment and retention while simultaneously avoiding any disruption in these important services of our school bus children. New York City is also, is in a unique position to lead by example, improving the conditions of the school bus industry. New York City School Bus Umbrella Services, Nice Bus, is a not-for-profit corporate corporation established by the city during the de Blasio administration to provide school bus transportation services just as any other private school bus contractor does. Whereas, other school bus companies and drivers, I'm sorry, other school bus companies are driven by the need to generate profit. As a not-for-profit, Nice Bus is not. Nice Bus offers an opportunity for the city to be an industry leader and set important standards to solidify the livelihoods of our drivers and ensure the safe transportations of our kids. Just as with the legacy contract, this Local 1181 collective bargaining agreement with Nice Bus is expiring in June, we have been earnestly attempting to negotiate the Nice, Nice Bus since May to set away contract in order to afford Nice Bus the ability to establish the standards and should be adopted by the rest of the industry. As those discussions progress, we seek your advocacy with Nice Bus and the Department of Education. In closing, I thank you again for your continued support of this industry and your continued support for this union. We look forward to seeing the smiles on the faces of the city's children throughout the remainder of the school year and beyond. Thank you so much, Thomas Fredt, and thank you for the additional time.
Thank you very much, sir. And I have a quick question, which is, the administration mentioned some suggestions for more drivers. Obviously, salary bargaining is part of it, absolutely, as you indicated. But also, some of the suggestions for working with attendants, working to have streamlined pipelines, perhaps at CUNY, and maybe some of the high schools. Are any of these suggestions good ones? What else would you suggest to get more members, hopefully, and also more drivers?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So actually, that that was, that was brought up at a power breakfast with the chancellor, where we recommended, right, that everyone can be, and everyone can be a lawyer, everyone can be a doctor, but they can also be a bus driver. So we want to make this a career again. So it was actually our, our idea to bring this to the chancellor, where we can open up these CUNIs and these schools for the CDL license to actually make it easier to get these licenses, maybe at a younger age, like 18 rather than 21, and just to entice this job again.
All right. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Janelle Canals from Advocates for Children.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Janelle Canals, and I am the director of the Robin Hood Project at Advocates for Children of New York. Since August, AFC has been contacted by well over 100 families concerning busing. As in prior years, families reached out to AFC because their children didn't have bus routes, buses didn't show up, buses arrived late at school or lasted for hours, and buses arrived without the necessary bus paraprofessionals or nurses to get to school safely. Just last week, we heard from a Spanish-speaking parent whose high school student with a disability still had not yet gone to school this year because no bus was in place. Our written testimony includes a number of challenges and recommendations for improving transportation, and I will highlight just a few right now. Federal and state laws require the city to provide transportation to students in foster care so that they can stay in their original school. Despite this obligation, the DOE only guarantees bus service for students in foster care who have transportation mandated by the REPs. While other students in foster care may apply for busing through an online exceptions forum, these forums can take weeks or even months to process, putting tremendous stress on already fragile foster care placements. Without necessary transportation, the DOE continues to, without necessary transportation, students are forced to change schools or even foster cares. The city must guarantee bus service or other door-to-door transportation to maintain school stability. The process for ensuring students with disabilities receive bus accommodations like limited-time travel, paraprofessionals, or nursing continues and remains unclear and confusing for families, as they're usually sent to different offices in the Department of Education, and they're asked for different documentation at every turn. The city must ensure that the Special Education Office and OPT intentionally engage in arranging bus routes and accommodations for students with disabilities, including identifying nurses and paraprofessionals prior to the start of the school year. The DOE must create clear protocol for requesting bus accommodations and train schools and DOE staff on this process. Although the city guarantees bus service for K-2, 6th grade students living in shelter, there were hundreds of students at the beginning of the school year in DHS shelters that didn't have routes at the start of the school year, due in part to data issues between DOE and DHS. Furthermore, students in temporary housing who do not reside in DHS shelters, including students in domestic violence shelters, or students who are doubled up, are required to complete an online exceptions form to request busing. And we have seen students wait weeks or even months for the DOE to process this form to just begin identifying a route. Arranging busing for students in domestic violence shelters continues to be particularly challenging. AFC alone has escalated multiple cases to the DOE's attention from just two domestic violence agencies where busing was not arranged for students in confidential shelter locations because the school had not updated an address to the PO box associated with the shelter. No available route was identified, or the request simply wasn't processed. Even now, with AFC involvement, some students still do not have busing more than two months into the school year. Among other steps, the DOE should work with DHS to ensure information needed to arrange bus service for students in shelter at the start of the school year. I apologize. May I finish?
You can go ahead.
Okay. Is arranged for the beginning of the school year, revamp the exceptions forum process, and coordinate with HRA to create an inter-agency policy for arranging bus service for students in domestic violence shelters. And lastly, regarding customer service, many families reach out to AFC because they're trying to resolve bus issues on their own, and they're often being bounced around from schools to bus companies to other DOE offices, like the Committee on Special Education or the Office for Students in Temporary Housing. The DOE must create a better system for families that includes, including, supporting families with tech literacy or internet, limited internet access for families who do not speak a language other than English. Lastly, regarding rideshare, rideshare is not an option for all families. The DOE requires a parent to be in the rideshare with a student to and from school, and not all families can do that. It's not a sustainable option. Busing really needs to be in place for students, even if rideshare is a temporary service. Thank you for this opportunity to testify, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I want Councilmember Ayella is here, and I cannot thank Advocates for Children enough. Instead of, with all due respect to whoever's doing the call center, private company, they should put you in charge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna Arkin Gallagher, Brooklyn Defender Services.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Anna Arkin Gallagher, and I'm a supervising attorney and policy counsel in the education practice at Brooklyn Defender Services. Thank you to Chairs Joseph and Brewer for holding this hearing and the opportunity to testify. BDS's education unit provides legal representation and informal advocacy to our school-aged clients and parents of children in New York City schools. While many of our clients and their children struggle to access transportation services within the DOE, as we've heard about today, many of the parents we work with have children who are in the foster system or who have been placed with other family members. So I want to focus specifically on the transportation challenges for students and families who've been separated by ACS. When children are removed from their families and placed in the foster system or with another family member, continuity in school placement can be an important source of stability during a period of great upheaval. As you heard, many students and families separated by ACS currently do receive busing, but the DOE has refused to guarantee bus service or another comparable mode of transportation to all of these students. The DOE must make that guarantee. Furthermore, even when these students do eventually receive busing, delays in routing can be hugely destabilizing to students who are already in crisis. DOE takes five to seven days, you heard them say before, at minimum, to route a student. But in our experience, it often takes significantly longer than a week for bus service to actually begin, whether that's due to things being begin, whether that's due to things being misentered and ATS, various people not talking to each other. While waiting for a bus, these students either miss school, or what often happens is they end up transferring to a school near the home where they've been placed, which maybe is, and often is, a very temporary placement. Children and families separated by ACS are among the most at-risk students for suspension and absenteeism and school dropout of any group in the DOE system. So at a bare minimum, busing must be guaranteed, but procedures have to also be put in place to ensure that these students don't miss school before busing is arranged, and particularly when there's no one to ride with the student in the ride share or other programs that have been offered. Our office recently worked with the parent of a six-year-old student in the foster system who was eligible for busing, he actually had IEP busing, but who missed over a month of school while the DOE looked for a bus route for him. The foster parent was unable to bring him to school, even in the DOE-provided car service, and though the foster agency had been ordered to transport him while awaiting a route, they also failed to do so. So he was just sitting home for a month of school. The DOE must work together with ACS as well to ensure not only that car services are available for students awaiting a bus route, but that if a foster parent or relative is unable to bring the child to school, that chaperone's transportation is available until bus service begins. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I've elaborated on many of these issues in my written testimony, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Ruth Guillaume? No. If Ruth Guillaume is present, please make your way to the table. Florence Shomar? Thank you.
Hi, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. In coming here this morning and listening to you both speak, it seemed like, well, why am I here? Our problem is just the same. They know what's going on. But every day, when I'm on a chat with parents at 7:00 in the morning for an hour, where's our bus? When is it coming? And we're dealing with this every day. Our issues for our students are exactly the same as the other ones, and no less important. Our school has reached for the Stars Learning Center in Brooklyn, and we're a school for students with autism ages 3 to 21, but our busing, mandated busing on our IEPs is ages 5 to 21. We have several bus companies, one where we're dealing with more problems than the others. There's definitely, the excuse has been, there's a shortage of drivers, and they don't guarantee anything. They do not let us know if we have a driver that day. There's no driver on that route right now. The parents get called last minute, or the bus does another run before they're doing our run, and then our students are picked up an hour later. They guarantee us we'll have a bus at dismissal at 1:00. We'll call just to confirm it. Sorry, we don't have a driver for the afternoon. Our parents have other students at home. Our parents are working. They're not always able to just pop in and come to school. We have students within the borough. We have students inter-borough. The ride share option, as the young lady here said, is not an option. You cannot put a student 5 or 6 or 17 years old with autism in a car without an adult. Our adults are not necessarily able to go. And I'm first hearing about the ride share today. We were not informed at school about this. Actually, my parent, one of our parents told us this morning, they told us that we have ride share, that you could do ride share, and the school is responsible for it, and it's the first we're hearing of it. The buses don't come when they say they're coming. They don't know that day. They're waiting for a replacement driver. They have the matron there, but they don't have the driver. It's been a real hardship for our parents. We're really hoping that even though it's just our small program, that this meeting, this hearing can really give us the opportunity to have changes and have our parents be able to send their kids to school. Our kids with autism, they're missing their education, and the structure that they're not getting is detrimental to them.
Well, I want to thank all three of you because I hope you can see that we're very serious about this issue and that we're not going to give up until we get it right. But I thank you all for testifying.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to bring up our next panel, Farida Satar and Brenda Triplet of Children's Aid and Diana Ashwarama.
Thank you, Chairs Rita Joseph, Gail Brewer, and members of the Education Oversight and Investigations Committees for the opportunity to testify today about school transportation. First, I would like to acknowledge the New York City Council for its support of students in foster care, which helped lead to the creation of the team at the New York City Department of Education focused on students in foster care. My name is Farida Satar, and I am an education advocate for Children's Aid, and we currently serve 650 school-aged youth in foster care. I would like to share a story about a foster parent Cynthia and a child Kevin in care that I am currently supporting to highlight the unintended consequences of not having busing in place. Kevin is a five-year-old boy who is on the spectrum, has Cesar Disorder and other conditions. He has door-to-door busing on his IEP but has not had busing since school began this year due to no route being available. From pre-K up until now, Kevin had consistent bus transportation, which helped regulate his separation anxiety. Children's Aid has provided private car service, which also requires a chaperone since the child is so young. This is a temporary solution, and there are unintended consequences for using the private car service. Cynthia, the foster parent, is often late to work because she has no chaperone for Kevin in the private car service. Then to return back home, then to travel to work, she had to hire a babysitter to chaperone and pick up Kevin from school at the end of the day because if she continued to leave work early, she was risking being unemployed. The new transportation routine with private service with either Cynthia or the babysitter doing pickup and/or drop-off has triggered Kevin's separation anxiety and making it harder for him to enter the school building when he arrives in the morning. He has basically regressed this year in coping because of transportation not being available. For the past three months, Kevin's case has not been resolved by Office of Pupil Transportation and New York City Department of Education, and his mental and physical health continues to be affected. While I'm encouraged to know that DOE has a team to support youth in foster care, there are still challenges with bus transportation. Kevin is just one of seven youth that I am working with who don't have transportation, and I urge the city to expedite the transportation needs of youth in foster care. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about this important issue. I am happy to answer any questions you have.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Brenda Triplet. I am the Director of Educational Achievement and Partnerships in the Child Welfare and Family Services Division of Children's Aid. I'd like to thank Chairs Rita Joseph and Gail Brewer and members of the Education and Oversight and Investigations Committees for the opportunity to testify on how the New York City Department of Education can further strengthen support and services for the nearly 5,000 students who are in the foster care system. I am a retired public school educator, 34 years. I have served nearly 35, 35 years, actually, God, as a vice, as a teacher, vice principal, principal district administrator, and served as a foster parent for many years. So with my background, I bring multiple lenses to this issue of providing transportation to DOE students who are also youth in care. I am currently charged with the task of ensuring school stability for approximately 650 of children's aides of school-aged youth in foster care. Every Student Succeeds Act and the Fostering Connections Act require local school districts and child welfare agencies to collaborate to keep students in their original schools when they enter foster care or change foster care placements unless it is in their best interest to transfer to a new school. There is, however, a disconnect between policy and practice due to the lack of infrastructure to comply with these mandates. Just last week, we contacted the DOE's Office of Pupil Transportation to inquire about the status of a transportation request we had submitted in October. We were informed that the OPT office is working on the requests in the order in which they are received, and at this point, they are only up to September 28th. Three years and eight months ago, almost to this exact date, I sat right here in this seat before the New York Council's Education Committee to testify on the negative reverberating impact of the lack of transportation on our youth in foster care. I shared the story of three siblings who were fortunate enough to have been placed together in a home in Woodside, Queens, but whose school of origin was located in another borough. I was truly moved by the response of the former chair of the Education Committee at that time. He stated, and I quote, because I held on to this quote, he said, "For the record, the DOE spends over $1.2 billion on school bus contracts, and yet, they're falling short, and they fail to provide transportation for youth in foster care? That is unacceptable. That is unacceptable. Budgets are not just numbers, they are documents that reflect values. In our city, we value all of our children." May I sum?
Continue, please.
Thank you. I walked away confident, hopeful, and trusting this process, hence I am here again. Three years and eight months later, I sit before you with the same plea, on behalf of the thousands of youth in foster care throughout New York City. It is crucial for the city to invest in the infrastructure to provide reliable, timely transportation for children in foster care in grades kindergarten through sixth. To sum, I'd like to thank the New York City Council for their support of children, youth and families and communities in New York City. Special thanks to Chairman Rita Joseph, because I know that you know based on your background. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify before you today on this very important issue.
Thank you. Do you want to give us just a second about what you think should happen, though? It was in your testimony. But what do you think should happen? Obviously, nothing happened, nothing is what you're saying between three years ago and now? Or what do you think should happen? Both of you?
Right, so I think I have seen an improvement. I mean, I over, I retired five years ago, and five years ago is when I started at Children's Aid, and I've watched, and they had, it's not for lack of trying. The OPT office has, we now have a liaison. We didn't always have a liaison, and that shows progress. And, but she can only do but so much she wants. She is trying very hard to find routes, but if the routes are not there, if the drivers aren't there, there's but so much that she can do. We have seen a marked improvement. However, there are still those children who are sitting home. And so your question, Chair, what can be done? Lot of smart people in this room. I, I wish I had answered.
I think you said it best. If you have, you can have communication, but if you don't have a route and you don't have the driver, that's a challenge. That's where the problem is.
Absolutely.
Did you want to add anything?
I just wanted to share that ridership is an option, of course, which is wonderful, but we need chaperones. DOE can certify people, paras. People need jobs. Chaperones can be available for kids to go to school. Our foster care kids should not have to suffer on a daily basis.
No, I agree. You know, this is personal. Matter of fact, Councilmember Brewer and I were both foster parents. So we've been through the system. We know how it is. So this is coming from a personal side. As I've always mentioned, and I've talked about that as becoming the Chair of Education, that my son is more blessed that we were able to do the transportation, but not many New Yorkers have that opportunity. So we will continue to lift and fight for this unique population because my two boys were able to, you know, keep a steady home because we didn't have to move them around and because transportation was reliable. So on behalf of the students in foster care, the fight is ongoing to make sure that they have a reliable fight, and all of my students in New York City.
May I just also add one thing about the chaperones, how important that is? While we wait for, while we wait for a solution, it's, we have access to private transportation. The chaperone issue is huge. If there were money, we can't charge for chaperones. We send our own staff. So we might start our day at 5:00 in the morning. If there were funds for chaperones while they are waiting to solve the huge issue of transportation, that would be a tremendous help.
That's a good point, because we can add that to the list. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. If Diana Avchalumova is present, please step forward. In the meantime, we're going to go to our remote panelists testifying over Zoom, starting with Catherine Hoy of AHRC New York City.
Hi, good afternoon. Chair Brewer, Chair Joseph, members of the Education Committee and Committee on Oversight and Investigations, thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Catherine Hoy. I'm the Director of Advocacy Services at AHRC New York City. I'm a member of the ARISE Coalition. For 74 years, AHRC has supported New Yorkers with intellectual and developmental disabilities to lead full, equitable lives in their communities. The education advocacy program I administer provides direct services and guidance to more than 200 New York City students with intellectual and developmental disabilities and their family members each year. Today, I'd like to speak to you from the heart about the experiences of families and children I'm working with who are bearing the brunt of an inequitable transportation system. Most students I work with are recommended for District 75 settings. Most have significant cognitive delays, sensory impairments, and are classified with autism and emotional disabilities and multiple disabilities. Busing is a mandated service for these students since most cannot attend their local community school and rely on transportation to a neighboring district or borough. As you know, parents in District 75 and state-approved non-public schools have less input into where their child is placed, and schools are rarely down the block. Many schools are miles from home. Students, including 4-, 5-, and 6-year-olds with significant disabilities, are spending more than two hours on the bus to and from school each day. That's if a student has a route, if a paraprofessional has been retained, and if their transportation accommodations have been approved in a timely manner. I'd like more understanding of the capacity of the Office of School Health to review, approve, or deny these requests, and if there's a denial, what information families receive so they can correct the forms well before a transportation crisis arises. There is a severe lack of transparency between family, schools, and the Office of School Health regarding accommodation requests and timelines, and this happens for many students year after year after year. One student whose parent is here today has been waiting since May for their child's accommodations to be approved. Her child was out of school for almost two months this fall with little to no communication from school and seemingly no urgency on the behalf of District 75. There was no attempt to provide or implement alternate education services or supports while she was not attending. The regression she's experienced has been immense, and this is not an isolated incident, as we all know today. So I'm preaching to the choir here, and I know that, and I'm thankful to be with all of you. Separately, I'd just like to say, NICS, the New York City Schools Account, while a great initiative to improve information sharing, and I believe Chair Joseph, you mentioned this, prevents many families without a reliable phone or internet from accessing busing information. It doesn't work for everyone. Parents are losing jobs or gambling with their family's financial stability because taking or picking up their child is the only option schools have given them when transportation issues arise. This is not a viable solution. Some students I work with have been out of school for months. One student's parent had to cancel chemotherapy appointments this past spring because the para could not dependently shown up, and their child was not permitted to ride unless they were present. The voucher system was not an option for them. It's not an option for many families that cannot ride with their child. This was after the student missed four months of school last fall because school could not hire his mandated transportation para and did not contract out for the service in a timely manner. May I finish?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Many more students are not able to attend regularly because they require a paraprofessional, and the bus on staff are not available. There needs to be a solution for these students in light of ongoing workforce crisis issues, which, again, have been, have been spoken about at length today. Students who miss their essential services and education for weeks and months at a time may not catch up. They cannot receive RSAs to access all the services that they're missing. It's not practical. And by the way, their family members cannot take them to get the services that an RSA would enable them to get, right? The issue is transportation. They're isolated at home. They have no access to friends and peers. Parents are losing employment, and really, what's lost here is trust, trust in schools, in teachers, in IEP teams, in public education in general. I'm so grateful to be here today. I'm grateful to work with these families and students, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to testify. The issue has to be resolved. Students belong in school, period. Thank you.
Thank you very much. When you talk to OPT, what do they tell you when you call to complain? What, is there any response?
I, someone mentioned it, they said it perfectly before, and it, it's almost funny if you aren't regularly crying and wringing your hands, you know, that, talk to the school, talk to the bus company, talk to the Office of School Health. I don't see it here, and that's if you can get through and when you get through. And, you know, I advocate now for families to loop in their council member, to loop in the public advocate, just, just at a certain point, you think, this doesn't have to be this hard, right? I mean, we have other issues, and, and the busing, I, you know, my colleagues have a few hundred students on, on their And, and the busing, I, you know, my colleagues have a few hundred students on, on their rosters they're lucky to work with, that this issue comes up so frequently. Yes, we call. And what we hear is, either too often we hear, "I don't see it. I don't see it in the system. I don't see the accommodation." And that's when I have the paperwork in front of me, I know it was submitted, I was at the meeting, I tell families, "Oh, you know, you got to be careful because the transportation accommodation form, if you date that HIPAA, you know, after the doctor dates it, you have to have the doctor's stamp." It's a dance. These families are, you know, in year after year asked to, and they do, and everyone does. They submit their forms, they get the doctor's stamp, they have the right, you know, wording for the accommodation, they have to know the specific language. It's, you need an advanced degree in transportation accommodations. It's, it's beyond.
Thank you very much. We're working on it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Sarah Catalinato from Parents to Improve School Transportation.
Hello, okay, I was still editing. I didn't hear my name called. Greetings. As a founder of Parents to Improve School Transportation, we've followed this service for 12 years. Others are describing specific inequities, so I'm going to focus on solutions and on why this crisis is no surprise. We thank citywide parent councils, unions, and others who made enough noise about busing problems to catch the attention of these two important committees. We've collaborated to exchange info and ideas. We rallied across the city, and on Friday, we are going to the UN, because access to school is a human right. The bus route system only activates corrections to problems one by one, and those transportation coordinators, it's not a full job. It's people who are also doing 99 things at their same school. We're planning a ballot referendum for what we call a school bus bill of rights, including democratic governance. We want the city to empower a panel with leaders of parents, workers, and people with disabilities to make stronger criteria for the quality of this service. We will ask the voters to approve a more comprehensive change to the city's charter for school transportation, because we know all you can do is, is reporting laws, and those are not actually affecting the service itself. But we welcome your endorsements when we petition, starting in January. We should also be not surprised about school bus issues that deprive kids of the basic right to get a full day of school each day. OPT is finally admitting one root of the problem. Their new $9 million phone system states, "We are experiencing staffing shortages. This will have an impact and likely cause service disruptions." However, the shortage did not happen in isolation from policy decisions made by their bosses. We have mayoral control. The 2013 school bus strike was provoked when then-mayor and chancellor decided to chop EPP for a portion of the drivers' attendance and mechanics. Alongside an OPT leader who later was fired in a big scandal, they changed the bidding to favor companies which bid lower and claimed that this would put more money in the classrooms. Fast forward to the predictable result in which 140,000 students can't even count on getting to these classrooms. Parents warned you. Our written testimony cites comments by the CCSE and PIS parents to many city leaders and hearings over many years. We cite the termination of 2,000 experienced workers in 2013, and the domino effect of cuts in the pay packets for new hires, and more. If the company lowers its bid by about the same amount, it stopped investing in employees but keeps the same profit, then we taxpayers are subsidizing private owners but not getting the public service that people fought for.
Time has expired?
Yeah, you need to wrap up. Thank you.
Last sentence. Please envision a better bus system sooner than later, even if it means shaking up the status quo. And please vocally support a hefty union contract for the workers who transport our kids. I'm done.
Next, we have Lori Podvesker from Include NYC, followed by Jenna Provenzano CIDNY.
Hi, thank you. We'd like to thank both of the committees for holding this very important hearing. My name is Lori Podvesker, and I am the Director of Disability and Education Policy at Include NYC. We've been around for almost 40 years, helping many families navigate the complex special education service and support system. We commend the city for the last couple of years for their efforts to strengthen the efficacy and the quality of school bus transportation services by establishing NYC Bus, providing data on school bus routes to the city council as per local laws 26 and 33 on school bus routes, creating more accessible information online for parents and caregivers, and the recent announcement of the city receiving an 18-plus million dollar grant to begin converting over 5,000 diesel buses towards electric and clean buses. However, these initiatives do not adequately address longtime systemic issues nor timely ones as a result of the pandemic in the last few years. As a result, citywide practices, policies, and lack of transparency and accountability on the provision of transportation services and vendor contract deliverables continue to inequitably impact the educational progress and social-emotional being of tens of thousands of students with disabilities. School bus staffing shortages have led to routing problems, such as students from multiple schools being assigned to the same route. This has led to longer traveling time for students to and from school. Consequently, students with disabilities often are forced to sit on idle buses while they endure different starting and ending times of their busmates' school day schedules. These same students often are on idling buses for longer than the three minutes that the current New York City law on vehicle idling allows, or one minute when adjacent to a K-12 school. Emissions from buses, especially diesel buses, are one of the leading causes of air pollution that contributes to asthma and other serious health conditions. We know firsthand that low-income students and students of color are disproportionately impacted by air pollution. We also know there is a correlation between children in high-poverty areas being more likely to be diagnosed with asthma and more likely to receive special education services. Furthermore, students with disabilities miss related services and specialized instructions as a result of getting to school late, prematurely boarding buses in the afternoon so their bus route can transport students from multiple schools. And as a result, many of these students are heavily dysregulated and are agitated from the time they are picked up by the bus from the time their actual school day begins. Include NYC hears from hundreds of parents each year about school buses, and so far, this year is no different than past ones. In addition to parents reaching out to us for help with the issues that just outlined above, here's a short list of additional ways we've helped parents in the last year. Parents whose children were stuck at home and not being educated due to needing a busing para or a porter. Parents reaching out to us for help when their child could not receive meaningful special education recovery services in person because busing was not available. Parents looking to change their child's bus route as a result of busing staff.
Time has expired?
May I continue?
Yes, just please sum up soon. Thank you.
Sure, I'm going to go to recommendations. So I think this is really important. The Chancellor's Regulations on Busing A801 has not been updated since over 22 years ago. If you look at the language, it mirrors a completely different organizational structure, and the times that are in there that buses have to wait, it's not fair from a parent's perspective at all. We believe that the city should mandate one campus per bus route, that the city should split up students according to their chronological ages, so elementary-age students can no longer be assigned to buses with students up to the age of 21. We believe that the city should create an accountability mechanism that measures timely and language-accessible information with families, that the city provides more public transparency on the organizational structure of OPT and funding currently close to $2 billion. We think the city should mandate additional training on young people with disabilities for all New York City busing staff that cannot be delivered by bus companies. Bus companies do not have expertise on young people with disability.
Thank you. You need to sum up and submit testimony. We would take it very, very seriously. All right?
Okay, just one last recommendation, that City Council laws 26 and 33 get amended, so it specifically includes metrics on bus routes for students with disabilities mandated for specialized instruction, and that the data structure changes, so it actually captures the timeliness of door-to-door routes, which the city calls curb-to-curb, which is the same as specialized transportation, so that it is student-centered as opposed to bus-centered.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Jenna Provenzano CIDNY.
Sidney.
Sidney?
Go ahead, we can hear you, Jenna. Go ahead.
Okay, all right, sorry. So my name's Jenna Provenzano, I work with the Center for Independence of New York. Basically, I'm new to my position, but I've learned a lot in this hearing today. So I really just kind of want to speak more to the lack of transportation and children living on buses. My background is about 11 years in the disabilities field. Most, my experience has only been mainly been out on Island. But, you know, even in that stage, busing has kind of been a big issue. You know, so I think it's important for busing and the transportation routes to be figured out in these younger years, so that, you know, students kind of have a proper busing in transportation throughout their life, because it's still a problem even in adulthood, and that can kind of lead to struggles when they get to the older adult age, that they don't want to go to program or work programs, because they may be used to kind of for transportation in their younger years. You know, and definitely, you know, longer transportation can lead to behavioral issues, medical issues, there are so many vast, vast amounts of issues that can happen. So I'd really urge everyone to kind of, you know, hopefully figure out a better plan, cohesively as a group, to kind of figure out better transportation routes that are more suited to the child's needs, and that they're not as long as they currently are now. That's all I really have to say. You know, I'll probably send in a testimony that's a little bit more put together and a little bit more lengthy, but, you know, just urging to make sure that transportation routes, you know, are on time and short, and, you know, support the needs of every child.
Thank you. Our next several witnesses, Amy Sai from the NYC Coalition for Educating Families Together, Courtney Yadu from New York Legal Assistance Group, Alana Schwartz from CASA NYC, followed by Courtney Nelson from the International Academy of Hope. Amy Sai, NYC Coalition for Educating Families Together.
Good morning, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Brewer and Chair Joseph, and the Committee on Oversight and Hearing Investigations, Committee on Education. My name is Amy Sai. I am also the co-president of the Citywide Council for District 75. I've been a member of the District 75 Education Council for six years, for three terms, and I have myself personally been the parent of a 17-year-old who's been on a bus for 15 years from early intervention. So this is really crucial to me personally, but as well as my 26,000 students of District 75 families that have been dealing with this for a very long time historically, prior to the pandemic, for decades. This is not new. This is for a long time of a crisis for our families. Long bus rides, long early bus rides, and arriving at school either very early or very late. You know, a lot of our students rely on consistency. They rely on the emotional and the stabilization for their, their time on getting to school, being in school to get their education, and coming home. Also, giving them time to have enrichment and after-school programs, which currently they are not receiving, because they have to be on that bus to get home, or else they will have no parent that'd be able to pick them up at 5:00. Just like myself, I'm a parent of five children. So relying on school bus for a child that travels from north side of the Bronx to the south side of the Bronx to get an education for their, for their multi-disability is really important. I really want to touch on the social-emotional part of our students. You know, a lot of our students who are, who really expect a bus, their cheese bus, to be on time early in the morning, to get on a bus, be respected, and have a quiet time on that bus to get to school on an appropriate time. Not two hours, not three hours, not also the time where they're being bullied by an older child who's in high school and they're in elementary. A lot of our students are also in neighborhoods that aren't as comfortable to get to school while they're on the bus for a long time. And so really just, you know, entailing that every issue that our families deal with, our children deal with on a stu, on a school bus, it is about respect, communication, a human right, and having the appropriate access to education. Every child should have an after-school program and also be having a school bus to come home so that they can get these after-school enrichment programs, to socialize, to be independent, to have success, so that they're not leaving the school system with trauma to their early childhood just because of school bus transportation issues. This has been too long for many of our students, and too many of our families have dealt this even after graduating. So we need to be in real communication with initiatives, implementation, that really works for all of our students. Students that are in District 75, students in our non-public and private programs, students that are also in our gen ed that do not have an IP but still need access to education, all of our students that are in temporary housing, including those students that do not live in shelters but also live with their grandparents, live there to aunts and uncles, and foster parents that are have disabilities. So appreciate you hearing me this afternoon to this, to my testimony, and I hope that you take every word today from all of our attendees. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Amy, thank you very much for now and previous. You're always a great voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have Courtney Yadu from NILAG, followed by Alana Schwartz, CASA NYC, followed by Courtney Nelson, International Academy of Hope. NILAG?
Good afternoon, Chair Brewer, Chair Joseph, and staff, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Courtney Yadu, and I'm a staff attorney in the Special Education Unit at New York Legal Assistance Group. NILAG uses the power of the law to help New Yorkers experiencing poverty or in crisis combat economic, racial, and social injustices. For more than 20 years, NILAG's Special Education Unit has advocated on behalf of children with disabilities. We are deeply concerned by the widespread transportation failures this school year. The lack of reliable bus service and the denial of IEP mandated transportation services have created crisis and confusion for families. Months into the school year, our clients are still waiting for bus service, stuck on routes without bus drivers. Months into the school year, our clients are still waiting for medically necessary nurses and paraprofessionals. In the meantime, they cannot ride the bus. As many other panelists have shared, children with complex disabilities often must travel the farthest from home to attend specialized programs. Given the lack of transportation services, their families must make impossible trade-offs every day. Should they embark on an hours-long commute to school, or should they go to work? Should they spend their limited income on car service to school, or on necessities like food and rent? Should they transfer their child to a nearby school that doesn't meet their needs, or continue waiting for the DOE and OPT to provide transportation? If they cannot get their child to school, are they risking an ACS investigation? The weight of these trade-offs has taken a tremendous toll on students and families. I'll devote the rest of my time to the impact on two NILAG clients, who I'll call Nancy and Lucas. Nancy is a 10-year-old with autism and seizure disorder. Her IEP mandates specialized transportation with a number of medical accommodations, including a nurse to monitor her seizure activity. At the start of the summer session, and then again in September, the DOE failed to provide Nancy with any transportation services. For nearly two months, Nancy's mother spent approximately two and a half hours transporting Nancy between their home in Queens and her school in Manhattan each day, making it difficult for her to work. Nancy's family accrued over $2,000 in expenses from rideshare services, an enormous burden given their limited income. Next, I'll turn to Lucas. Lucas is a six-year-old with autism and Down syndrome. His IEP also mandates specialized transportation and a one-to-one para to ensure his safety on the bus. For the first six weeks of the school year, Lucas did not have a bus route. Once he finally received a route, he could not board the bus because the DOE failed to provide him with a para. In late October, Lucas finally received a paraprofessional. However, after just days of service, the para stopped reporting to work, so Lucas was again without transportation. Lucas's mother works and has another elementary-school-aged child, so could not transport him between their home in Brooklyn and school in Manhattan every day. As a result, Lucas has missed weeks of school this school year. Even with NILAG's constant outreach to the DOE and OPT, Nancy, Lucas, and their families have endured months of uncertainty and suffering. For families without advocates, transportation problems can feel insurmountable.
Time has expired?
We urge the city to address these issues as soon as possible. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you very much. When you call the Department of Education, what happens? What kind of response do you get? Thank you very much. When you call the Department of Education, what happens? What kind of response do you get?
So in many of these cases, there, we don't get a response, and there's no clear path for how to escalate these issues, and that's from, you know, from our office. For parents, I think there's often a complete lack of transparency about how they can escalate these problems. And we've even had a number of principals at private, data-proofed private schools and independent private schools reach out to us, because they're not sure how to escalate these problems.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alana Schwartz, CASA NYC.
Great, yes, hi. My name is Alana Schwartz, and I'm a CASA advocate volunteer. First, I'd like to acknowledge the council for its support of students in foster care, which helps lead to the creation of a first-of-its-kind team at the Department of Education focused solely on students in foster care. As a CASA, I'm really familiar with the importance of reliable school transportation for all students, particularly those in foster care. The federal and state law require New York City provide transportation to students in foster care, so they can stay in their original school when they come into foster care or change foster homes, except in the limited situation where it's in the student's best interest to transfer schools. I'm going to tell you about a child we'll call Callie. Callie was assigned a CASA to her case in July of 2022. The judge ordered that CASA assist with services for the child, specifically requesting and obtaining busing services for the fall 2022 school year. Callie, who's six years old, is on a trial discharge to her father, which means that the child is still technically in the foster care system, but has been reunited with their father on a trial basis. Callie's enrolled in a new school this year, a charter school, which is in a different borough from her current residence, and her father is unable to escort her to and from school daily due to his work schedule, and the child's too young to go alone. Because she's still in foster care, Callie should be eligible for busing services under the DOE's foster care exception. Through conversations with DOE staff, school personnel, and family members, it's unclear if Callie's school has ever submitted an exception request for her to receive busing to and from school. Callie attends a charter school, and it's unclear if the school is aware that children in foster care are entitled to busing. Oops, did I freeze?
Yes, we see you now.
Shoot, sorry. Okay, I'm not sure where I, where I cut out, but I'll start this part over. Through conversations with the DOE staff, school personnel, and family members, it's unclear if Callie's school ever submitted an exception request for her to receive busing to and from school. Callie attends a charter school, and it's unclear if the school is even aware that children in foster care are entitled to busing. As of November 9th, the DOE staff is still searching for the exception request, more than two months into the school year. We still don't know if busing has even been requested for Callie, much less whether or not the DOE will grant the service of busing to her. While many students in foster care do currently receive busing, the DOE has refused to guarantee bus services or other comparable mode of transportations to these students. As a result, students who cannot travel to school on their own have been forced to transfer schools or transfer foster homes if they can't be added to an existing bus route. Even when students do receive busing delays in routing, like the situation described above, can be hugely destabilizing to students who are already in the time of transition. Furthermore, while the DOE says it will reimburse students and families for transportation costs if no bus route is available, they will not reimburse costs for chaperone if the parent, foster parent, or agency staff cannot accompany the student to and from school every day. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your testimony.
Thank you, Courtney Nelson from International Academy of Hope. In the meantime, Amanda Naveen, if you could make your way to the table, thank you.
Hey, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Courtney Nelson, I'm the Director of Operations for the International Academy of Hope, known as IHOPE. We are a non-public school for ages five, students ages five to 21 with traumatic and acquired brain injuries. We currently have 105 students, and we're located in Midtown Manhattan, but we service students from all five boroughs. Gail, I think you've actually been to visit our program.
I have.
Pro- yes. Our program is unique in that each of our students receive anywhere from 12 to 25 hours of mandated therapy services a week, in addition to their academic instructions due to significant medical needs. These services are life-sustaining for many of our students, and are provided five days a week, starting at 8:30. It is crucial that students arrive on time each day and are traveling to and from school within a limited travel time designated on their individualized education plan, which many of our students have. This ensures that their morning and afternoon routines for feeding and medication can be maintained, and allows them to travel within a safe window of time to prevent a medical emergency while in transit. Now, I did outline some more specific problems that we've been having, but it really echoes what the group has been saying, so I'm going to skip through that for the sake of time. As a school, we have more accessibility to speak with OPT routers and management than parents do. And although these contacts have been helpful, they're only ever stepping in to deescalate extreme issues that we've brought to their attention, they're never being proactive about preventing the issue. We've had hundreds of violations that have been filed over the course of eight years that I've been with the program. The same persistent, the same issues persist, and nothing has been done on OPT's end to improve their routing, communication with families, or training with bus companies. As a result, our students are at risk of significant regression when they're not maintaining medically necessary therapeutic routines, which allow them to continually develop their motor and communication skills. Additionally, for students that are riding over two hours to get to and from school, those with behavioral challenges have had meltdowns. We've had students that arrive at school having soiled themselves because they're missing their toileting routines. We have students that are under extreme stress or missing medications and have seizure disorders, and while in transit, can have a medical emergency that could result in being taken to the hospital, which has happened on several occasions. This has resulted in extreme emotional hardship for parents, students, and for educators. Although I've outlined the problems, I believe in being solutions-focused, that's kind of what I want to focus on today. The Department of Education, OPT, and the bus companies need to have better communication. They all play a part in making sure that transportation is accurate, and they all point fingers at each other. My suggestions to fix it, which I think are, obviously there's outlying issues with staffing at the bus companies, and I understand that that's not necessarily tomorrow fixed, but there are some things that have been going on for eight years that I think are smaller fixes that can happen within the DOE and OPT and bus companies. DOE needs to ensure that their medical coding matches the student IEP before it's transmitted to OPT. If a child's been, requires a wheelchair for transportation, DOE needs to make sure OPT and the bus company know that. We've had countless students that haven't been able to have a bus for weeks at a time, because they're not coded for having a wheelchair, even though they've been in one their whole life. So that's an issue. Routes need to make sense. OPT should be requiring that bus companies perform a GPS-tracked dry run before they're permitted to pick up students to ensure that routes work. These routes should be reviewed by OPT, and I think maybe Google Maps sometimes, to prevent overcrowding or backwards routes. Before they ship, they're, can I may I finish? I have just three more.
Quickly, go ahead.
Yes. Bus companies should require EZ Pass lanes to be used for routes that can benefit from it, and I think that OPT should cover the cost, so that bus companies use them regardless about complaining about the cost. I understand that routes change mid-year, but OPT needs to inform parents directly of route changes at least 48 hours before they occur, so that parents can plan and troubleshoot. And bus drivers, in addition to being trained on how to strap in wheelchairs and operate lifts, anyone servicing special education route should be required to attend a sensitivity training for working with special education students, and that should be required for sign-off and oversight by OPT. Thank you all for letting me speak today, I'm not going to take up more of your time, but if you have any questions for me, you can contact me via email or phone, and I'll send the details in my written testimony.
Thank you, just one quick question, have you noticed any improvement this year?
No, it's actually, we've had unprecedented issues this year that haven't happened in years prior. So this is the worst year that we've had in terms of transportation. We had three students that didn't have a bus route for over 30 days. We had parents not even get their routing information until after the school year started this year, and those are all things that have never been that bad in the past. We've always had the same issues, but this year it's been significantly worse, because there aren't physically enough buses to service our program, which we're being told is due to the staffing shortages. But it's been the worst it's ever been.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amanda Naveen, and just for a moment, I'll call the next group to ready themselves on Zoom. Demone Walcott from Cook School and Institute, Judy Polanco, Stacy Boje, Michael DeJesus, Beth Isgraw-Heller. Thank you, Ms. Naveen.
Neville, can you hear me?
Sorry.
That's all right. Good morning, City Council members, and thank you for hosting this important hearing. My name is Amanda Neville, my daughter Nina attends the Lexington School for the Deaf in Elmhurst, Queens. We live in Bedford-Stevens in Brooklyn, she has an IEP that includes transportation. For our family, the OPT failure started before the academic year began, when we didn't receive the usual information about bus right, bus route, and assigned company in the mail before the start of school. OPT had moved all communication online, but failed to notify families of the new process, and in our case, failed to provide our school with the code that we needed to log into the portal. As of today, we still have not received the codes and have never been able to log into the portal. For the first three weeks of school, we had no idea what was happening, because there was no communication, and we were forced to wait hours for the first few days in hoping, in the hopes that a bus would come. I gave up and started sending Nina via Lyft, an expensive solution, but the only one available to me, because taking her myself and then going to work would take between two and three hours. I found out weeks later that we were assigned to a route, but our pickup time was 10:00 a.m. That bus was arriving to school at 11:30. The bus company was sending the driver out twice, and we were in the unfortunate position of being on the second route. But this is what it means to be assigned a route. After much complaining and emails to every representative I could find, we were assigned to a new route, and the pickup time was between 7:50 and 8:00 a.m. School starts at 8:00. I was prepared to accept this as an improvement, but within a week, more children were added to an already overburdened route, and the pickup time was pushed back further and further. The driver became frustrated and started threatening to quit mid-school year. When the driver was sick or needed a day off, there was no bus service. We didn't find out until the bus didn't show up. This morning, the bus arrived at 7:35, an hour earlier than usual. We had five minutes' notice. My still, my child still did not arrive to school on time. The impact on our family is significant. My daughter has missed many hours of instruction this semester, not just 15 minutes out of time, but up to 90 minutes a day. The only days she's arrived on time were the days when I sent her via car service. It's her first semester of high school, which is already stressful. She hates being late, hates missing class, and hates not knowing every single day how her day will start. Her mental health and self-confidence are suffering. I miss time from work every day because of, because I have to file reports with OPT, communicate with the school, and research other ways to advocate for my daughter. I filed at least 14 tickets, which, most of which covered multiple days. I've never been contacted by OPT or followed up on any of these. Meanwhile, OPT discourages parents from logging reports, and then suggests that a lower rate of reporting indicates that problems aren't as bad. The tracking systems that have long been promised haven't been implemented in our buses. We rely on a web of text messages to track our children, and in some cases, calm our children down, because they're treated more like hostages than young citizens. OPT representatives today describe progress and reported on solutions that have not reached many, and I dare say, most of the families affected, or that they have not had the positive outcomes that were portrayed. There have been many days when there is no attendant, and despite three months of disruption, we have never been offered the rideshare accommodation. And if it requires a parent to chaperone, it's useless to working parents. I have not been reimbursed for car service that I paid for in September, and I've received no communication or follow-up about my receipts. I'll also add that the policy does not include tips. Our drivers, matrons, and crossing guards do want to work, but they want fair wages, a reasonable schedule and workload, working equipment, proper training, paid time off, and other benefits. We cannot blame them.
Thank you very much. One question, because I asked earlier, because I had gotten the complaint that there wasn't an attendant on every bus, you're kind of saying something similar?
It is completely his.
I was just wondering if you could elaborate on that, because I do get that complaint also. Could you elaborate on that a little?
All I can, all I can say is that sometimes there's a matron, and sometimes there's not. There's no rhyme or reason, we get no notice. I thought one had been fired, because we hadn't had one in so long. It turns out that she's a floater who gets reassigned. It's, that was farcical, it made me laugh out loud. I, that's ridiculous.
Thank you very much, and we will work, we will work on this.
And I'll say, we can't wait until next school year. This is so disruptive.
Absolutely.
Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for being here today.
Going back to remote testimony, Judy Polanco, who will be followed by Stacy Boje, who will be followed by Michael DeJesus, who will be followed by Beth Isgraw-Heller. Judy Polanco.
Okay, hi. My name is Judy Polanco, and I'm the mother of two disabled children, residents of the Bronx Borough, Helen Parkway. My four-year-old daughter, Nova Polanco, is in the spectrum of autism, and she can't speak. She was actually accepted to District 75 School, PS 596X. Unfortunately, her transportation accommodation was still pending review since May of the present year. In May, the transportation accommodation was submitted for review, and because someone or a group of individuals decided not to do their jobs, this was not reviewed until September of the present year, after school had already started. At which point, they decided to reject the accommodation, because the medical note was considered old. I then submitted a new doctor's transportation accommodation in early September, and took my child to school as I could, with limitations, as I waited for the review. I was told that this review would take two weeks, however, the statement was false, because we're now in November. I was not able to send my daughter to school for a week, as I didn't have the means to take her every day, and unfortunately, noticed a regression. The teacher also noticed the regression, when I was able to bring her back to school, as my daughter started self-harming. Because of the regression, I have asked family members to assist in helping me temporarily with taking my daughter to school and pick her up while we wait for this nightmare to end. As an FYI, I was not ever informed of, you know, that I could use a car service. I heard that now. But in any event, it has taken the Director of Advocacy Services of AHRC, Ms. Catherine Hoy, who's here today, who has helped me tremendously, and reaching out to the Office of Jomani Williams and Ms. Velazquez, who are my representatives, to get a response on updates. I received prompt response from the Office of Jomani Williams two weeks ago, that they would assist me in this unfortunate issue. And last week, I was told that the accommodation was finally approved. However, we are now facing another busing issue, which is they can't find a paraprofessional to take the job, because we're now in November, and I may have to wait until after Thanksgiving for my daughter to get the services. This is extremely sad and heartbreaking that this happens in our school system, and I have to also, I mean, I'm not the only parent that goes through this nightmare, unfortunately. I think that accountability needs to be a priority for these employees involved in the school transportation process. I worked in corporate America for over a decade in human resources, and honestly, I would have fired everyone involved in the process who decided to drop the ball on such serious matter. We are dealing with children, and the recruiting and employee development process should be top-tier. There should be no tolerance for this kind of behavior or errors from individuals who hold these employment opportunities and decide to review these transportation medical accommodations when they please. These reviews should be taken serious, and no child nor family should have to wait for six months to get these served. These employees need to be held accountable for their errors. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Stacy Boje, followed by Michael DeJesus, followed by Beth Isgraw-Heller, followed by Demone Walcott. Thank you, Stacy Boje.
Hi, I want to thank the committee for doing such a great job. So I'm going to just talk about, I'm an advocate for families with disabilities and specializing in autism. And I'm going to talk about some solutions, because I think that's where we need to go. Because I have talked to the DOE about, let's start with medical transportation forms. These are, the administration is very slow on authorizing these special accommodations. But once you get an accommodation, my solution would be, let's accept it for three years. A child with autism or a disability, it's not going to go away, that disability. So that would ease up the administration part at the DOE. And then parents could get that accommodation. The second thing I want to talk about is MTA cards for families with shelters or special needs. It would be really great if the DOE would allow families to get two Metro cards, one for the child, one for a para, a babysitter. This would help with finances. And also, there's after-school activities, so sometimes you have a different person taking that child home. So the parents could say, here's the Metro card, you don't have to pay for it. That's a solution. I heard today, we're spending $2 billion with the DOE for busing. Because it's going to be two years before these contracts are approved, perhaps the committee could suggest bus companies bus companies have to hire full-time drivers. We are down 315 buses. This would help keep our children busy. Also, communication is a big problem. OPT, you have to call OPT, get a number, and keep that case number. Nothing really happens, except that you have a case saying the bus doesn't show up. So, and So, and the school coordinators tell you to call OPT and OPT tells you to talk to the school. So there is a lack of communication between both divisions. And I think the DOE Transportation has to acknowledge that, of problem going on. I get a lot of calls from parents, what do I do, what do I do, what do I do? I say, you know, you can get the share time. Doesn't work. This, this share thing doesn't work. That's why I'm saying immediately this year, perhaps the committee could ask for more Metro cards for families. The biggest issue.
Time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can you hear me?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Michael DeJesus. I want to first start off by saying that I tried to have a written statement, but after listening to everyone, I felt it more important to kind of just go from my heart and from my mind. Right? I want to first say that I'm humbled and deeply saddened by the amount of children that are affected and impacted by this ongoing problem and the different areas from, from foster care and homelessness and migrants to students with disabilities. I'm the father of an amazing young, differently-abled young man named Christopher. And he has been unfairly not given the opportunity to attend school regularly due to the unfair practices of the DOE and the Office of People Transportation for 11 years at this point. It is November, basically December, my son has been on time to school six times this year. My wife and I have, you know, on a daily basis, trying as often as we can for all those 11 years to be on the phone and call and do all the steps required to, to, to work on his busing. And that has been an ongoing problem. If I can think of a solution, I mean, I think one thing that I would love to have the opportunity is to be able to talk to the people who run OPT directly. As far as I'm concerned, this is not a bus company problem. The drivers and the matrons have always been more than willing and more than caring to, to get my son to and from school. The routing has always been the issue. And OPT, the one before me, just said, you know, we call and I call every day. And, you know, I work full-time, my wife works full-time, 15, 20 minutes a day. I'm regurgitating the same story every single day to just give me another number. And every day, they say that the, the previous ticket was canceled because it was rectified. They were told that the bus was late because of traffic. So the, the fact that, you know, they have this company answering calls does nothing for, for the situation. If, if people who are in charge would be able to see the emotion and, and the stress that this causes for families as a whole in person, maybe they would be a little bit more inclined to, to put a little bit more work in. The two gentlemen that spoke in the beginning used really nice vocabulary, talked to everyone there beautifully, like, you know, they're working on a problem. The problem is nowhere near being fixed. And, you know, any percentage, you can tell me numbers, the fact that my son and thousands of other students are not showing up to school on time, I don't care what the percentages of, of how well.
Time has expired.
Based on, based on previous numbers and data that they've collected.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Beth Isgraw-Heller, followed by Demone Walcott from Cook School.
Hi. Good afternoon. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. First, I wanted to say thank you to everyone here on the panel today and to all the people who've already spoken. I, I want to mirror everything that all of the, that's been said in all of the testimony. I've experienced one or all of those things at any given time in my journey into the special education and transportation issues. I have bullet points and solutions. I'll go as quickly as I can. My son is a 2E learner. He's gifted and autistic with other comorbidities. There is, he's required to have a 1211 classroom and transportation in his IEP. There is literally one school that meets his profile in all of New York City. It's the Summit School in Queens. We live in Brooklyn. And so, since he started, 2020, I've been dealing with bus issues. And I've submitted testimony previously, so I'm not going to regale you with those details right now, but I'm happy to resend it to anyone who'd like to see it. So, one of the things I've learned is that non-public schools are kind of a redheaded stepchild of the DOE. One of the bigger problems is that the NICSa account, the online student account, is not readily available to non-public students. I suspect it's not readily available to private students and potentially charter students and other populations of children who may not have come from the public school system. My son has one because he attended PSA in Brooklyn Heights, and so he had already an established account. The reason that's a problem is because DOE is constantly referring parents to the NICSa account. Go to the NICSa account, you can see everything. You can see what your bus is. You can, you can lodge a complaint that way. Well, you can find your bus, but no, there is no online form that you can submit a complaint. Basically, if you have a bus complaint, it says, call your bus company or call your school administrator. There is no way to log it online. So I'd like to know where the $9 million awarded by the PEP went and how the DOE is using it. So one of my suggestions is to please audit the DOE and what they're doing with the $9 million for their help desk. I don't think outsourcing it for a help line is actually a good solution. And I had all the same problems with tickets, you know, getting tickets never, never resolved, they're closed without explanation, et cetera. I'm a mother who had to learn the ropes by myself with special education system and transportation, and it's been an uphill climb. So I've made it my mission and my passion to educate as many parents at my son's school as possible. I created a primer and I sent it to everyone that spoke to me privately, along with information that was compiled by PISD. Sarah Cattolino has a very, very deep well of knowledge that I hope you can tap into. It is incredibly illuminating. And I know that CCSE represents non-public schools, but they also represent all disabilities in the New York City public school systems. There is no one rep for transportation issues and there's no one rep for non-public schools. So I would like to suggest that.
Time has expired.
Can I just finish?
Yeah, go ahead and conclude. Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to say that we need a panel of people who are dedicated to the different factions of students, non-public, private, charter, kids in shelters, et cetera. Also, there is, the, the representative system does not work for non-public schools. Our liaisons to the DOE are basically impotent. They have no decision-making ability, they have no authority. It has to be escalated. And I found that solutions really only happened at my school when parents rattled the cages. Non-public schools are afraid to say anything because they get publicly, because they get most of their students from the DOE. And I think within reason, they're within their rights to be slightly afraid that there'll be some kind of retaliation. And so there's no dialogue that's open between parents and the school. We can't work together. We're all doing our advocacy in a vacuum, and that's not right. They don't want to be seen as biting the hands that feed them. And then I just want to say that, lastly, in previous testimony that I've submitted, I have done the rideshares. They are a nightmare. They've prevented me from fulfilling my livelihood as a freelancer, which is really damaging for me. There were all kinds of issues with it, but more to the, more to the point, I extrapolated what it would cost to send my child to school every day from my house to Queens, every day, with me going there and back, based on one ride, because I was stranded because of a miscommunication. It was $60 and I extrapolated that it would have cost $42,300 to send my child in a ride share every single day for a year, back and forth to Queens. So I would love to see an audit done on how much the DOE is spending on rideshares because it is a stopgap. I also have some other suggestions. The basic minimum is that employees, bus employees, need to know how to use their own phones if they don't have GPS on the bus. My son was picked up at the very beginning of the year. His driver and his para did not know how to use their phone. They got lost in Brooklyn, could not find the, the LIE. I had to call the dispatcher to get them on the highway. My son texted me and said, Mom, I'm scared. They don't know how to use their phones or the GPS. How are we going to get to school? They won't let me help them. So that's the kind of stress that our kids go under. And again, I've experienced every kind of shade of difficulty. I mirror everything everyone has said. And I cannot thank you enough for, for shining a very bright spotlight on this issue in great detail. And I sincerely appreciate the grilling that representatives gave to the DOE in holding everyone accountable. There needs to be better communication. They need to have streamlined services. And there needs to be a dedicated rep for every facet of children within the system that rely on busing.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Gal.
Demone.
Thank you, Rita Josephs.
Demone Walcott from the Cook School, who will be followed by Nia Berg, Paulette Healy, followed by Lupe Hernandez.
Hi. Good afternoon. I want to thank the committee for holding this hearing. My name is Demone Walcott and I'm Transportation Coordinator at Cook School. The issue that I have is no different than a lot of the issues that was mentioned before. I believe we're all here for the students and I, I understand that there's a shortage in drivers. However, OPT's communication is unacceptable. I believe that's one of the biggest problems. We have special needs students, some with LT, limited time travels that's taken three hours to get home. We have concerned parents that's upset and stressed because their child is taking their toenails off due to anxiety of the long bus rides, students soiling themselves, and others who miss school because they get anxiety with the thought of being on the bus so long. When emailing OPT with our problems, I can have four to five emails before getting a response, with having four to five OPT members on that email. I feel that's ridiculous, that there's no communication whatsoever, it's like talking to a brick wall. If OPT gave us some type of reply, we could, we will be able to tell the parents something to help support them or give them a relief that this is being worked on. They don't tell us anything. Earlier this year, we had 73, three students that weren't routed because OPT system had them routed to our other site, which was deleted from the system. It took almost the end of September for us to get all of those students routed to our correct site. I emailed over and over and over again and again, communication was horrible. OPT system needs to be better. Every year, we have to go through the hassle of changing family addresses that was updated 10 years ago. This causes unnecessary problems in the beginning, middle, and the school, and at the end of the school year. Students are routed incorrectly without a bus because of this. It's sad that our families don't trust or can depend on the quote-unquote reliable bus service that's given to them. The school and parents are told to make a complaint, but how many complaints is needed for an issue to actually be handled? Since becoming Transportation Coordinator, there is one person at OPC, he's a router, Damian Martinez, and he's helped me tremendously. I can call and he's able to communicate, hey, give me two days, give me a week. But it's some type of communication so that I can relay this to the parent, which I believe any parent will want to know, that their problem is being heard and being taken care Again, the most, the biggest problem that we do have with OPC is the communication. I think that besides the drive, the shortage of, shortage of drivers, that if we have better communication with OPT and with the bus company, we can see.
Time has expired.
We can see some type of solution being made. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would say, Cook School is very fortunate to have you, and we are going to follow up. Thank you.
Nia Berg, who will be followed by Paulette Healy, who will be followed by Lupe Hernandez. Thank you.
Good, good afternoon, everyone. It was the morning when we started this. Thank you, everyone, for hosting this testimony. My name is Nia Berg and I am the Executive Director of New York Appleseed, which is a nonprofit organization that advocates for integrated schools and communities in New York City and state. I'm testifying today to share with the council what we believe to be several of the most pertinent findings from a comprehensive research briefing that we published on Yellow Bus Service in April 2022. When working to untangle the incredible complex history of Yellow Bus Service in New York City, three points rose to the surface. Number one, that the responsibility of getting children to school safely and on time is suffering from a fragmented system that's only been exacerbated by COVID-19. That, number two, the lack of accessible public data on student ridership is really stunting accountability. And most importantly, that students and families, many of which have spoken today or have been represented, that are particularly from historically marginalized groups, are going unheard and asking for quality transit to which they rely on. To briefly elaborate on some of the points of our report, I want to highlight some of the findings, that despite providing transportation to all eligible New York City students in public charter and non-public schools, the DOE website contains almost no data or statistics on Yellow Bus ridership, past or present. The sole source of public data concerning ridership in New York City comes from an independent Budget Office report that's 22 years old and reflects K through eight, not K through 12 data. We had to contact the IBO directly for up-to-date information. Following a similar line, Chancellor's Regulation A 801, despite its importance in regulating quality transit services, has not been updated in over 20 years, despite past indications from the DOE that it would do so in the 2019, 2020 school year. And as far as we know, this remains to be the case. And to, to round this off, really, that, that Yellow Bus Service is a resource and a necessity for many of our most marginalized student groups to get to school. And yet, at the heart of our nearly 40-page report is a story of harmful ambivalence to fix problems that families raise year after year. We offer a following next steps to think about navigating the complexities of Yellow Bus Service to build a more equitable future, that the New York City Department of Education can provide easily accessible public data on Yellow Bus ridership, that city leadership require research on ways to better centralize responsibility for more equitable dissemination and implementation of this service. And then, most importantly, that we are facilitating comprehensive community engagement on the needs of students and families, particularly those from historically marginalized groups. I think something that we heard today is many of these groups have been working for years and years and years. And after we published this report, we went to rallies, we listened to these folks, we spoke to them.
Time has expired.
And so, to convene all of these folks, I think we could find much better solutions than we have at the moment. Thank you for listening, and we also welcome any follow-up from council members on a report we submitted, written testimony that provides further details. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Can everyone hear me? Okay, great. Thank you for this opportunity. It's always good to see you, Chair Brewer and Chair Joseph. I just always wish it was under better circumstances. So I want to start my testimony out. I am the First Vice President of the City Board Council on Special Education. And back in February of 2013, to then-Chancellor Dennis Walcott, the CCSE had sent him a letter in regards to the low bids with no EPP, and I quote, "The savings that you're estimating clearly does not take into effect the destruction and havoc that the long-term damage that we as parents will inherit as a result of your failure to resolve a problem that is within your control." We are living that havoc and chaos now. And I have to, I have to be very blunt. When we talk about how it costs us $1.2 billion for people's transportation prior to COVID, and now it costs us $1.7 billion to transport our children post-COVID, with $9 million of it going to a call center designed strictly to obscure and adverse parent reporting, the systems are pretty much put in place to work exactly as they were designed. They were designed to disenfranchise our families. They were designed to wreak confusion and chaos. They were designed to keep parents from reporting issues because the parents have no problem reaching myself or other advocates on this panel, such as Sarah Cattolino over at PISD NYC, to Lupe Hernandez, who is spearheading the Open Arms Initiative in District Two, to Rima Esquero, who is the Bronx High School President, Council President. All of our parents have been able to reach us and we've been able to advocate for them, thousands, thousands of parents, yet they can't reach OPT. So again, the $9 million was put into place to work exactly as it was intended to. So I have submitted written testimony that outlines. So I have submitted written testimony that outlines uh a long list of different um solutions and um and suggestions, but just to highlight a few, we had gone to District 75 trying to implement a uh a bus, a transportation parapilot program in order to um empower parents to volunteer for these very um hard-to-fill positions in order to get their children to school. If a parent can be a para for another family who needs a medical para, and that guarantees that they will get a para for their child, that's pretty much how the system would work, but it stalled when it got to General Counsel at DOE, no surprise. Um, we also had uh submitted um a resolution that CCSE had put out uh in terms of improvements to pupil transportation, including a contract oversight um uh panel and a working group to oversee the implementation of routing and um
Time has expired?
OPT, oh, can I just finish up?
Yep, finish up, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, there's, there's about 15 different solutions there, so I will send that to you, and I won't go into detail. What I do want to use my, the the additional time for is I talk about my son Lucas all the time, and he's a strong advocate himself. And back in 2018, he missed 56 days of school because of uh transportation issues. I'm not going to talk about Lucas today, I'm going to talk about Sally Cable, who was a five-year-old girl who was diagnosed with leukemia when she was 10 months old. Her mother, Nicole Cable, is a member of my community in Brooklyn South, and she had spent months, not hours, months, fighting with OPT to try to get transportation for her five-year-old, because the only moments of joy she was feeling between pain and chemo was the moments that she was able to have to be around kids and and her friends at school at the Manhattan Star Academy. In June of 2018, Nicole actually came to City Council and testified against the atrocities her own childhood experienced, and how within a school year, her, her child Sally was only able to attend four months of school because of transportation and para issues. After that testimony, City Council had put out a a bill rectifying um accountability for OPT to to report on these issues about para shortages and transportation shortages. Nicole had spent all of August trying to make sure that there was busing in place for Sally uh when she started her uh first grade in September. Unfortunately, Sally died September 19th, 2018, and she wasn't able to start first grade. That is the lived experience our families are seeing. This happened in 2018, and we're in 2022, and we need to do better, because Sally didn't get it tomorrow, and we need to make sure that that doesn't keep happening, thank you.
Thank you very much, and we are serious about doing better, thank you.
Yes, we are. Lupe Hernandez.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. My name is Lupe Hernandez, and I am one of the Borough President Appointees for Community Education Council for District Two, where I chair the Students with Disabilities Committee. I also represent families citywide, helping advocate and working alongside D-75 Bus Committee, as well as PIS Parents to Improve School Transportation. I thank you Chair Brewer, and thank you Chair Joseph. I also thank you both for the Oversight Committee hearings that on the COVID relief academic funding, that a lot went unspent, which meant many families and students' needs were not met. Most of these same students are impacted by the bus issues we are addressing today. For decades, decades, I want to say that again, for decades, our students that rely on school bus transportation have been failed for and by the for, or they've been failed by the for-profit bus companies that are contracted out for billions of dollars, and this money does not go towards a better quality bus ride for our students. The question is, where, where are these dollars going? $1.7 billion quoted today, there is zero oversight for these companies who are privatized. More delays and more complaints, yet these same companies continue to get contracts renewed under mail control, and more money is being allocated to them. I heard today by Kevin Moran that complaints decreased this year, yet this does not include the many times a family raises these incidents, meaning a family can complain 25 times that their child's bus is late, yet all complaints may be filed under one incident or ticket number. So the transparency is key in this form of oversight, and I do understand OPT's logistics need of having to um create one ticket in order to address these issues, but this does not tell you the whole story. We have been asking for a commission that will address the equity pay parity, as the bus driver, para, nurses, matrons, and mechanics shortage has created the crisis that we are experiencing now. Why were these essential workers not protected during the pandemic? Why were they let go? And why are we not, why were they not provided health care when with these contracts are more than enough to provide a sustainable workforce development? In fact, I've heard from staff that work for these bus companies and these liquidation fines that we heard about earlier, these workers sometimes are having to foot these bills, they are being forced to pay these fines, even though it has, it is out of their control, some of these um fines are being issued. There is no way for the DOE to address these problems if we continue to allow the bus companies to not be held accountable to these contracts that are to service our most vulnerable students in getting them to school. Mail control has benefited for the for-profit bus companies with zero oversight and/or accountability where these contracts continue to be renewed.
Time has expired?
I apologize, I would like to point out a couple things, the rest of the country, the rest of the state, they own their own bus fleets, they have total control over routes, staffing, and complaints. Um, this really could help, in fact, cameras would help give parents peace of mind. OPT uses EduLog, which is not working, does not provide routes that are efficient. The administration has talked a lot about disenrollment and absenteeism, but does not look at the vast number of students that do not get to school due to OPT not doing their part. Um, when a para is sick or unavailable, that student cannot get on the bus. Uh, aside from therapies being missed, many families in the past two years have had ACS cases opened um due to a child not going to school, and it was the fault of OPT, yet these agencies are not talking to each other, communication is a beautiful thing when used effectively. Students that rely on school bus transportation were excluded from participating in SERs or after-school programs or other enrichment activities. Students should not have to have a medical accommodation on their IEP to have AC on a bus, especially during our hot months. I just, I want to point out that parents um have been helping to escalate these issues with OPT that they do address individually, um, that's through PIS, that's through the D-75 bus companies, Advocates for Children, a lot of people that spoke up today, these are parent advocates, not paid people that are helping get these issues addressed. However, um, there's many more families that don't know or not on these platforms or not able to go to these council hearings um to address these issues, and language accessibility proves to be more challenging to navigate. Nice Bus was, has worked with us, they've been a great example, and guess what, they're the one not-for-profit bus company that is doing the job because it's serving our students and their needs and not facing anything on cost. So please support the school bus bill of rights that we plan to start petitioning and legislating for at the beginning of the year, because education is a human right, and I thank you again, um, I will submit the remainder of my testimony.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, I'm now
What was the name of the school bus company? Chair Joseph was asking.
Nice Bus, that's the Nice Bus
Oh, okay, Nice Bus.
Yes, we've heard a lot about Nice Bus today, and I will say
We just wanted to double check, thank you so much.
No problem.
Thank you, I told them they should use it as a model.
Thank you, I'm now going to read registrants uh who are not logged into Zoom, if you are there, please use, if you hear your name, please use the raise hand function in Zoom to indicate that you're present and ready to testify. Sheri Holstein, Tanya Blasio, Khadija Davis, Frederick Rodriguez, Keith R. Johnson, Valerie Cruz, Santala Waller, Leslie Armstrong, Charmela Medirata, Beverly Reese, Ashley Pimentel, Fanfan Jiang, Desis Arguera, Mitchell Eugene Britton. If you've heard your name, please use the ra, raise hand function in Zoom. If we neglected to call your name and you are present and ready to testify, please use the raise hand function now.
Okay, I want, this hearing is about to conclude, I want to thank my co-chair, the amazing Chair of Education, Rita Joseph, and I want to make it clear to the parents, as well as to the Department of Education, to the teachers, principals, advocates that were very, very serious about solving this. Um, it's going to take all of us, but we cannot have students unable to go to school because they can't get there, thank you very much.
Um, thank you Chair Brewer, and I second your sentiments, we are going to follow up, this is not just a hearing for a hearing, as I gave them assignments today, they have homework and they must turn it in to me, thank you.